I call the September 24th meeting of the Planning Board to order. First on the agenda is, as usual, any public comment from anybody who wishes to comment on something other than what is on the agenda, say something that you'd like to see us bring up in the future. Is there anybody who wishes to do a comment? Okay. The minutes and our clerk is not here, so is he not going to be here tonight?
He called me moments ago, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I'm late. To say, he was late. He had the courtesy to call and say he would be late. I did not. So, he's on his way back from Boston. He should be here 10, 15 minutes.
All right, well, then we will take this...
I move the table with note minutes.
Yes, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Approval not required plans received between September 10, 2019, through September 24, 2019. Applicant, Virginia Rivasa, plan of land to divide one lot into five lots located at 502 Sandwich Road, BSS Design. Is there anybody who wishes to represent this plan?
Hi, I'm Virginia Rivasa. I am a former member of the Planning Board, and I have a parcel of land that's been my family for a long time. And having been on the Planning Board, I had seen people come before the Board distraught because somebody, they, behind them, they had, you know, a big, large plot of land, had been vacant for decades, and suddenly somebody wanted to develop it. And I always said, if I ever, you know, were to raise some cash or whatever, I'd offer it to my butters first. So, I did initially offer some property to six people. Four stepped forward, and it was a contingency that everybody had to agree. And I have now met some of my neighbors who I never have known, excuse me. So, that's basically what this is. They're all aware that these are unbuildable lots. One of them cannot be attached to their main lot because it doesn't have the 50 feet on their property line, but they are fine with that. Basically, what they're doing is just preserving their backyards. So, that's what it's all about.
Does anybody have any questions, comments on this? Okay, I'd entertain.
So, the, we're looking at the, your property is the big, open space there.
Yes, this is my parcel, well, the whole thing. But that's my parcel, and then the four butters are buying each of these to attach to their lots accordingly.
Okay, so, so it's not taking that entire parcel and dividing it into five pieces, it's just adding to, let's see, lot two, three?
Well, this was one big parcel.
Yeah, it's one lot coming into five.
And it's now going to be five parcels. Mine is parcel one, and then there's two, three, four, five.
Oh, okay. I thought these were existing.
Yeah. No, 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 no. It was one big parcel, and I'm just cutting off those sections to the butters.
Now, now it's there, okay.
One, two, three, four, five. You can see it now. I didn't notice it earlier until you said that.
I thought they were existing.
I had made the same mistake. I was wondering what we were here for. Now I see it.
Okay.
So, these are, these are being broken off.
Anybody?
What is the access to those lots?
They don't have any. It's not buildable lots.
They don't have, they are unbuildable lots.
They're being bought by a butters to, because they want the extra land.
Yeah, basically what I did was, I offered it to them if they wanted to preserve their backyard so that there would be no future development behind them. And they were very receptive. Initially, the lot lines were a lot, I was just extending everybody's lots, and some were really big and some were a little bit smaller. They worked together as a group to decide what the plot, the lot lines would be, so that everybody's pretty much paying the same amount. So, they're really, they've been very appreciative that I did this, and I'm very appreciative that they were willing to do it, so.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? And may I have a motion to endorse, to endorse?
To endorse.
Without, okay, without regard to yada, yada.
Still abilities, right.
Okay, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, then we have another A and R. Samuel Coleman, plan of land to divide one lot into two lots located at 196 Metoxit Road, Falmouth Engineering.
Good evening, Board members. For the record, my name is Michael Borselli from Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant, Samuel Coleman. Mr. Coleman owns property on Metoxit Road. It has adequate size to be divided into two lots from one. Each of the lots in question, Proposed Lot One and Proposed Lot Two have adequate frontage, access area, and lot width. So, the lot line, the proposed lot line I'm showing with the most here that divides it effectively in half, there's a dwelling on this part of the lot in this location. So, this lot would be a vacant lot, and this lot would contain the house. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Does anybody have any questions?
I move to endorse.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Public hearing. And I'm sorry, I do not know how to pronounce the last name. Harry O. Hinesian?
Very nice.
Ace that one. If you would come up, please. This is for a site plan review application to construct an accessory apartment at 680 Quaker Road. Landmark site design.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Harry O. Hinesian. I own 680 Quaker Road, and we are looking to turn the house into a two-family home, two-family dwelling with the accessory apartment. I believe you have the plans. This is the, the house, existing house, with all of the setbacks. We will be adding the proposed 10 by 12 deck off to the right of the house. That'll become the second means of egress for the second story, the second-story apartment. Along the side, there will be parking for the apartment where the proposed deck is going to be. This is the existing first-floor plan. It shows three bedrooms, three baths, living room, kitchen, dining room, sun porch, and wooden deck out the rear of the house. The stairway going up to the second floor will be enclosed, all in, in line with the building department's request to get this to happen. This is the second-floor apartment. We are adding a bathroom. There was no bathroom upstairs. The existing family room, playroom, will become the little kitchen, dining, and family room for the apartment, and where my hand is, is where basically that deck comes off for the other means of egress. You see the stairs on the other side that go down, and they all go outside as well. Full bath, hallway, two bedrooms, closet, et cetera. The existing house photos. This is the window that would be removed, where the deck would be built. Other than that, the rest of the house basically stays the same. We may paint it down the road, but that's another story. I don't know if you have any further questions?
Does anybody on the board wish to ask? Yes, Bob?
You mentioned that the second-floor apartment will be accessed through the sides from that deck that you had on the drawing there, and you also said the parking is going to be on that side of the building?
There is existing parking there now.
Okay.
So, it's just overgrown, et cetera, with a set of stairs that comes down, because Quaker's a little higher on that side of the house.
Okay, because I didn't see a curb cut, and I was just wondering if you were applying for second driveway. Yeah, okay.
Anybody else? Jim?
I have a question. Why the engineering department has weighed in about clearing bushes on the public way on this? I'd never seen that before, and it was one of the conditions that's actually in this, if you read, I think it's condition six, five or six. I wonder why we're doing that. It has nothing to do with an accessory apartment. It's not even on his land. It's, they're recommending that the, that he remove and trim and cut bushes that are on town property, and I just don't understand why we're doing that. Have you all read it?
Well, it says it's causing sight distance issues.
But it's not his land. Why doesn't the town just come in and do it themselves?
It's part of the landscaping. Nicer to do it this way.
But they're, they're making this accessory apartment contention upon that. I just think that that's a step.
Have you talked with anybody about this?
No, I haven't heard.
I've never seen the engineering department weigh in before to this level when we're not doing anything on the land itself. It's just the building. So, it seems to be like a stretch to me.
Tom, do you have any information on that?
No, I don't. Other than, engineering department is, you know, those folks like me who work on the, very conservative, are looking at what the issues are. I think if the rhododendrons are in, on, Harry O., I say Harry O., he told me, don't try to slaughter my last name. Just go with O. So, when Harry, you know, I talked before. I don't know if the, if the, if the shrubs are on his property or not.
The, your report actually says that they're on town property, and they required him to trim and cut them on town property, and I just thought that that was a reach.
I haven't seen that report.
It's, it's in our staff report, in conditions, I think it's five or six, on the second page. I just thought it was a stretch, but...
What it says is they may be in the right-of-way, and may be on his property, and they're asking if they are in the right-of-way for him to remove them.
Right, so that means...
And if they are on his property, to trim them back so they don't extend into the right-of-way. That's what they're asking. I ask them to...
They weren't asking him to cut things in the right-of-way?
Yeah, any bushes planted in the right-of-way shall be removed.
Yeah.
Well, if he planted them in the right-of-way, they're asking him to remove them.
Or if a previous owner did. We're doing that on another...
Why doesn't the town do that themselves? It's in the town property, is what I'm saying.
Because they don't do it.
I know. It's a way to solve a problem in putting a burden on accessory apartment to clear up something that's probably been there for 20 or 30 years, and I just thought it was a stretch.
Or they grew in, you know, they were planted correctly, and then they grew and grew and grew. Sure. Into the right-of-way. So, whack 'em back.
But they're making it a contention upon our approval. This is a conti...
That makes no sense to me.
That's the point. I agree they should be caught. I just don't think it has to be a condition of our approval, is my own opinion.
And I think it's perfectly fine to not include that as a condition. It's recommended.
And I'm fine with it. Then I would...
It's fine.
Then I have no problem. They can, they can solve the problem.
Well, we don't have a decision written up tonight, as you know. These are...
Right. That's a draft.
Right. Well, it's, it's a staff report, in essence.
No, okay, you're right.
I remind you that we do have an accessory apartment coming back before us that did plant things in the public right-of-way and would be asked to remove them.
Yeah.
So, I think it's reasonable.
I just thought I'd put it up. I hadn't seen it before, so.
Yeah.
I never saw an engineering report come in on one of these before, so.
Well, I think as you get more rural roads, rural, rulee, if there's such a word, you're going to find this. Probably on our street, there's a lot of that, too.
Well, I find it all the time.
Of course you do. So, is, are there any other comments or questions?
I have a plan.
Yes.
I think it probably should be commented that this is exactly what the accessory apartment bylaw wanted to see. That this is an accessory apartment plan that doesn't really change the exterior of the house. It's still clearly a single-family house. You've been to the building commissioner, you've gone through the process, you're going to meet all the requirements of them, and it's complete before it gets to us. Nicely done.
Oh, thank you.
So, there was a question of the number of bedrooms, because the first floor shows, there were three, I believe, and then two upstairs would make five bedrooms. Are you planning to do five bedrooms?
So, I purchased a five-bedroom house, so I have the listing. We just bought the house six months ago.
Okay.
So, it, it said five-bedroom house, five-bedroom septic, et cetera, so that's why we're keeping it three and two. We're not changing. There were two bedrooms on the second floor originally, and what we did, this was the bedroom one, and bedroom two went all the way to this wall. It was like a 17-foot-long bedroom. This is where we divided it up and put the bathroom for upstairs.
Yeah.
So, it was always set up as three down and two up. Well, that's how we bought it, I should say.
So, the Health Department says that the plan submitted would require a five-bedroom septic system. The, something meets requirements of a BR, the den, okay, meets requirements of a bedroom. Existing four-bedroom septic system, the one bedroom would need to be removed, or the septic system will need to be upgraded. So, they're saying that you only have a four-bedroom septic system.
I haven't seen that report either, so, or that statement.
That's from the Health Department. And it's also in a coastal overlay system.
District.
Yes, district, that it should not exceed four bedrooms if the lot contains less than 20,000 square feet. And if it has a pre-existing bedroom count that exceeds four bedrooms for 20,000, the feet of lot area can maintain that number of current beds, but cannot increase.
So, if I may, Harry O., would you mind clicking back to the first floor, please?
So, the building, the box in the lower-right corner has den written on it.
Yeah.
A lot of us have always assumed that a bedroom was a bedroom because it had a closet in it. Apparently not.
No.
A bedroom's a bedroom if it has a door and a window.
Yeah.
So, the septic system that's designed for the house, according to the Board of Health, is for a four-bedroom house. So, you have to maintain a four-bedroom house, or expand the septic system, or make that den not into a bedroom. And that is typically done by altering the interior wall to open up that opening and remove the door. So, if the door is gone, it's not a bedroom. You have a den, you have your bedrooms downstairs. You don't have to upgrade your septic system.
Okay, so you'd have to take out that wall there, though, because I don't think just removing a door...
Your opening has to be three and a half, there's a measurement, three and a half feet wider than the doorway.
Yeah.
And that gets back to the building code issues that we typically don't deal with, but we wanted to...
Right, that's a building inspector's job.
So, we'd want to...
Were you prepared for that, that that's not going to have a door?
So, two things, because I did see through the building department, I think it was three and a half or four feet case opening. The way this house is framed, I cannot do that here. As you can see, it's just big enough for a door. If need be, we would make the, oop, wrong, we would make the upstairs apartment a single bedroom, because this wall is being built as we speak. We have the permits in hand. I would make it a one-bedroom and put the four-foot opening upstairs, because that's what makes sense in the construction side of it.
So, because of the size of the septic system, you're constrained to four bedrooms in this particular area?
Unless I increase the system itself. So, I'll make that determination. We were, at this point, we want to make sure we can have the apartment, and then we'll look into what it might cost. You know, where's that high and low? Should we expand the system and keep it a five-bedroom house, or keep it a four-bedroom house with the system we have?
John, do you have anything?
Primary residence?
It will be as soon as the construction is completed.
Okay. Thank you.
My question is, where that stairwell goes down, now it goes into your living room, but it ends up, it looks like a window, so you'd be putting an exterior door there?
Right, there'll be an exterior door at the bottom of those stairs. So, the, when this wall, this was from when we purchased the house, the first-floor plan is...
Sure.
So, the wall will come here, all the way to, just to the window, and a new door will be cut in. So, the access will be, there'll be another door going into the living room, so it'll be a common area hallway from the second floor, and then the first floor can come out that way as well.
Sorry, I did my brother's house.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Any other comments? Well...
No, this is just exactly what we had envisioned.
Thank you. And honestly, when I was looking for a home, we looked at a lot of houses, and this lent itself to be why we're here tonight. It just works perfectly for the home.
John?
I just wanted to mention that if you make it a five-bedroom home, you may have to use denitrification for your septic system.
Oh, really?
The Board of Health will explain that to you, but you might want to ask that question before you make that decision.
No, thank you.
Because there is...
I'm not sure, but I, you're in a coastal pond overlay district with a 16,000-square-foot lot, so.
Okay.
There is provision, since you have five bedrooms, that you could maintain it at the five bedrooms, but the Board of Health is saying, you're going to have to upgrade your septic system, and John, I think is quite correct in saying that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, it might be easier to do it the other way.
Yeah, correct, correct. You know, interior work is a lot easier than exterior work.
Yeah.
Doubt about it.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
It's less expensive, too?
I would, I'm okay with moving along, but I'd also make sure that the two modifications we talked about are actually submitted and approved by staff going forward. One, showing the vestibule at the bottom of the stairs, and if he does decide to move, change the bedroom, that that's shown upstairs on a plan that's on file and on record, just what he said tonight.
Well, we haven't discussed it yet, and I think, until Mr. O. decides which way he'd like to go, I think we probably should not render a decision, because that should be part of our decision.
Okay, fine. I was trying to move it along and make a contention, but we can, we can bring it back and fix it.
So, if, if that would be another meeting?
It would be another meeting.
Then at that point, I'd rather say I would make it a one-bedroom apartment upstairs, because I'm concerned now about expanding the septic system.
Okay.
And the cost and all that. So, for me, even though it'd be a one-bedroom, it's still going to be a very nice apartment.
Yeah.
And I'd rather keep the three bedrooms down, construction-wise, et cetera. So, I have no problem with making that a one-bedroom accessory apartment.
Okay. It would still, we couldn't render a decision until next time, because we don't have it written up.
You need to show, you need to show the entri, I mean, I love the fact that you're not having to spend money to hire an architect. That's why we're trying to, so you can do it yourself. But we should at least have penciled lines in there.
Yeah.
Showing the vestibule, the two doors, and the one bedroom upstairs, so it's on record what we approved. And it could, you could do it by hand. You don't have to pay anybody. I think you're on the right track, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And, you know, you've got the upstairs rendering by hand, too, so you're just...
Yeah.
Take out the eraser, bring out the pencil.
Can you give me 20 minutes and I'll be back?
So, what's the next?
Our next Planning Board meeting is October 1st.
Okay. And that's when we're going to be doing the warrant articles.
That's correct.
So, we don't want to overload it too much, but this shouldn't be an overload.
I don't, I think it's, based on how things are going, I would like to think that we'd be able to take a look at the plan and move it right along and get Mr. O. on his way to moving in.
And I think you can go to the planning office and say, make sure that this is exactly what the Planning Board has in mind, and then we can probably have a decision ready.
Yep. So, get your pencil, sketch that, changes on the first floor, changes on the first floor. We'll have them back to the board.
The doorway coming out and the four-foot opening on the bedroom upstairs.
The vestibule has to be shown with a door coming now into the house, right? You said it's going to be shared.
Correct.
And a door going up. I think you show like a double line showing it's a two, you know, it's a firewall?
So, up here is that common hall with the stairs down.
Yeah.
And here's the existing door going in.
Right.
Not existing, to be...
Oh, so there's the common, is that upstairs?
It's upstairs.
Correct.
Okay.
So, why is that a common hall up there?
Because...
Because the stairwells...
The stairway goes to a landing.
Okay, so the stairway's not part of it.
So, there's the stairway that goes up to that common...
But you got to show the entrance. There's got to be a way to get out and in. You got to show...
Right, right there.
Right. But you have to show it on a plan. Because we really can't approve something that doesn't have a way to get in and get out on the plan.
A hand-drawn plan.
Yeah, hand-drawn.
I'll work with this. I'll show it here.
Yeah.
It's already shown, it's already shown upstairs in the hallway.
Yeah.
And then this bedroom door will become a four-foot case opening to alleviate that.
And you take away the word bedroom and you call it a den.
Den. Okay.
With a four-foot opening. No privacy.
Correct, yeah.
Well, the fact that you've got a kitchen over there in the family room, you know?
Yeah, library den.
Sure.
Wonderful.
Media center.
Anybody else have any other comments or requirements for this plan, or you like the way it is and what we've discussed tonight?
So, so the process is, he will come back with new drawings to show the office staff?
Correct.
They will draft a motion for us to vote on.
Correct. That's what we're looking at for October 1st.
Wonderful.
So, if you can get yourself in there and get it done really quickly.
No problem, no problem. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's go back, take the minutes off the table.
I move to take the minutes off, to put the minutes back on the table.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Paul?
Madam Chair, I recommend approval of the minutes of September 10, 2019, and September 16, 2019. That's corrected.
Second.
Any comments? All in favor?
Aye.
By the way, I apologize for coming late. I left Boston right after four o'clock.
Oh, it's good you're here now, even. Okay. So, we'll go back to our regular order. We have a continuation, College Light Opera Company, site plan review application to construct a new rehearsal hall and administrative building, as well as the addition of a two-car garage to an existing student housing building at 54 Chappaquaite Road, Holy Martinez Architects. And we have first, because this is the deadline tonight, we have to accept their request. I represent the College Light Opera Company. The deadline for the site plan review decision for the application currently before the board is tomorrow, but that's today. Given that the hearings on the site plan are still in progress, the applicant would like to request a 30-day extension to the deadline. Given that the hearings on the site plan are still in progress, the applicant would like to request a thirty-day extension to the deadline until October twenty-four, twenty nineteen, to allow for additional testimony and consideration of the application by the planning board. May I have a motion to accept that? The move is seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
And for the applicant.
Good evening, uh, my name is Jeff Nickerson, I'm an attorney in town, um, here for the applicant. Thanks to the board for, um, giving us an opportunity to take a look at what some of the issues and concerns the board had were and do our best to try to address them. For the record, the College Light Opera Company, as the board knows, is a nonprofit. You know, they've been in town since, uh, seventy-two, they were incorporated, they've owned the property since seventy-eight. To be redundant, the Dover Amendment applies. The proposal is to put up a rehearsal structure at the existing property at fifty-four Chappaquaite Road. The use was approved by the building commissioner as a Dover Amendment use. Uh, our conservation commission approved the plan, the Board of Health has approved our new septic plan. Um, and some of the major points that the board, um, and some of our neighbors, uh, wanted to have a little bit more information on at the last hearing. Number one was the cupola. If I may, I'll show how we've tried to be responsive in that respect. Uh, as you'll see, the cupola is gone, um, we eliminated the cupola. There were a row of windows added just to make sure that we can get some light and air in there, but this is below the thirty-five foot requirement that the board, um, was questioning at the last hearing. We do have a cupola over here, um, but it's purely ornamental. And I hope the board, um, would agree. This is from the rear, it's not as high resolution, but you can see this is where that cupola would stick out on the other side as well. Also, um, the board was asking about lighting, so we've tried to do what we can to, um, actually. That's a little bit more clear, so that's from the rear. Just for the board's understanding of the project, again, here's our cupola. There was also, um, discussion about the lighting on the building. So our very able architects have revised the lighting plan. They've eliminated some of the lights on the building. They're here tonight and they can talk about what the effect of modification of the lighting plan would have, um, as a visual impact. There was also, um, some discussion about, uh, the steps in the front of the building. Gonna try to do this. If I blow it, I'm gonna have to ask Cory to help me.
You were doing well there for a while.
You know, Jim, I was trying. Those steps that were in this area are gone now, it's just lawn. So those have been eliminated, a little bit less hardscape, a little bit more green space. The board expressed some concerns as well about, um, the lighting. Specifically, there were some low-level pathlights in this area, those have been eliminated. We had eliminated previously a post-light, a pole light that was in this area by the parking. You know, the board expressed a concern that it was a safety issue and that it might be appropriate to have a pole light there. That has been added back in. This bubble around the light is a depiction by, um, Kim Recurio, our landscape architect, of where she expects the light to hit the ground. Further, the board expressed an interest in, uh, making sure that this parking area in the front was lit. We had four lights, we thought it might be appropriate to reduce it to three. It seemed as though the board would be interested in having four back there, we've put the fourth one back in. And again, these bubbles kinda depict where the expectation is that the light is going to be hitting the ground. A further detail, these are the low-level pathlights. And the idea is that these bubbles further depict where the light's gonna be hitting the ground. You know, the kids get out from shows and then they have to go back and get back to their housing, so we need to have some path lighting for them to get where they need to be. So again, dimensionally, we conform in all ways. The proposed structure by, for lot coverage is nine point eight percent, twenty percent is a maximum. Sixteen point nine percent structures paving and parking, forty percent maximum. Front yard setback is fifty-three feet existing and it's twenty-five foot minimum, so we again conform there. Side yard setback is twenty-seven feet to an existing dormitory. Ten foot is required by code, we comply there. Our rear yard setback, student housing number three, is fifteen feet off the back property line, ten feet is required by code. Maximum height of the structure measured to the ridge is thirty-four feet, eight and fifteen sixteenths inches. So it is thirty-four, effectively thirty-four, um, roughly nine, which is below the thirty-five foot required minimum. You know, we tried to do what we could to be responsive, we've got compliance in terms of parking. You know, the Dover Amendment is what gives us the protection that allows us to have this use and to have this designated as a primary structure. Mr. Palmer has concluded that each of the structures on the site are primary structures, therefore they're within the thirty-five foot limitation. I've got all kinds of wonderful Dover Amendment case law, but I don't need to bore you with it, um, but, um, I can. But I figured I would ask if the board has any questions or concerns.
Jim?
Everything I objected to has been taken care of.
All?
How do you measure fifteen sixteenths of an inch on a height thirty-four feet?
I leave that to people more qualified than myself.
I think we made people take a quarter of an inch off a building before, so it's not, it is serious.
Shirley, oh, I'm sorry, I thought you were finished.
We had a lot of testimony from the architect on lighting and a lot of changes were made with pole lighting and the low lighting and I'm, I'm pleased to see that.
I'm all set, okay.
Could I see, I think it's the, uh, northwest elevation, do you have that?
I'm sure I do, if you just bear with me, I just gotta find it.
Take your time.
So northeast is on the bottom.
Okay. Northeast is on the bottom?
Yes, northeast elevation is on the bottom.
Okay, so northwest is from the, from the street?
Yep.
Okay. I kinda like the facade of the, the main structure on the, uh, in the old design with the, with the gable, uh, dormer off it, but. Yeah, that's just my opinion. Anybody else?
Jim?
I, I like the gable as well, but you know, I don't wanna cost the, uh, entity any more money. And, uh, although you do see it from the street, that's the problem.
Thought it fit in better with the, uh, with the design of the, uh, rounded building on the corner of the, uh, structure. Just, just my thought.
I agree. John?
I'm all set with it, thank you.
Okay. I wanna thank you for responding so nicely to all of the board's complaints, suggestions, whatever. It was very good of your group to do that. And I'm going to ask if there are any comments or questions from the public, but I don't wanna rehash of what was before and we just don't like it. The comments or questions must be in regard to what was presented tonight as to the changes that they have done. Is there anybody who wishes to say anything? Thank you, then I think we are all set to get a decision for our next meeting, it sounds like.
I hear this room on October first for.
Yes, ma'am?
May I ask a question?
You may ask a question, yes, state your name when you go up there.
My name is Susan Silby, I live at one four five Old Dock Road, across the street from fifty-four Chappaquaite Road, College Light Opera Company. I, uh, we wanted to understand about the fire access. That we understood that the road alongside the harbor was insufficient for a fire truck to enter. Is that true?
I believe, uh, Jeff, could you answer that? I believe the change was made according to the fire department, what they wanted for access of the fire truck. They wanted it a little bit wider.
To my understanding, I'm here with Mike McGrath as well, who's the engineer on the project. My understanding is that we haven't made a change in that road because we're constrained by conservation. And so if we were to change it, we would need conservation approval to change it.
Okay.
So if I may?
Yes.
I, I understand what the concern of the, uh, uh, cause I talked to Lieutenant Trope. He said it wasn't necessarily the road, but the vegetation that's around it. So, not that you're removing vegetation, but if you're clearing back that vegetation, so it's not encroaching upon the way. If he's got eighteen foot clear with the vegetation, uh, then the fire department was fine without having to build or expand the road.
And that can be done without Concom approval, taking.
It's like Harry O trimming his rhododendrons.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But this is on the harbor.
To keep a roadway clear, you have the right to do that, not beyond, but you have a right to keep the roadway clear.
And we had another question which was raised by you last, last meeting about the fact that the uses of this school seem to be for three months a year. And you asked the question of how much the Dover Amendment applied for the rest of the year.
I did ask the planners about that and got an answer to my question, it's a sort of a proportion thing. When, how the money is used for outside activities. And if it is used for the support of the educational purposes, that's okay. If it's a profit center, it's not okay, so that was the answer to it.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Is there anyone else? Please come up.
My name is Kathleen Sealy, I live at seventeen Chappaquaite Road and I had one question, um, to ask and that was the board raised a suggestion and first off, I really wanna thank you for making all the changes that you did and we really appreciate you listening to us and, and taking that, um, to heart and I know it was a lot of work, so thank you, we appreciate that. But there was one suggestion, I'm concerned about the lighting and the birds that I see there every night. There was one suggestion about maybe moving the footpath as part of the landscape plan and it was raised as a question or a suggestion last week, so I just raise that again and ask if there was any other consideration for that.
No, we can't really constrain them to do that, but they have removed some of the lighting.
Okay.
There, thank you. Anybody else? Okay, then we'll look forward on the meeting of the first to having a decision for you all. And thank you and thank all the neighbors for being concerned and coming and commenting and questioning. Really appreciate that, it's been a good process, thanks. Okay, changes to the Thalmah subdivision regulations and we've got a number of people here who are gonna work on that. And we will obviously let the room clear first.
Yes, I'm gonna have an issue on October first. Cause I'm in Boston for eight hours, starting at noon, but I think it'll be all right. Just tell Tom, but I don't think there's a problem.
If I may, Madam Chair?
Yes, please, Tom.
Uh, so, uh, we have been working with, uh, engineering, uh, and procurement on a number of different things regarding our subdivision regulations, uh. So what you have before you are, is a memo, a late-breaking memo for me that I was working on for much of the last week. And so inside of that memo, it has the bold and striked-through version, this is in, uh, in your, in your book. So the text that you see in red, stricken through, are the things that have been removed and the blue bold are the things that have been added. So essentially, we have replaced, uh, uh, the inspection protocol in section three oh five dash forty-two, which includes a pre-construction conference, uh, the list of inspections that are required, were based on what was proffered by, uh, the engineering division. Our current, uh, inspection protocol, these four issues, actually, in one instance, uh, required a builder to remove some things to be inspected, I don't have the particulars on that, but, uh, this is, uh, a considerable upgrade on how we go about, uh, looking at, uh, doing these inspections and making sure things that are done properly and in order, so we get things done right the first time. So the inspection protocol is here, uh, eleven inspections, road upgrade, drainage, water services, final subgrade gravel base, sketch basin inlets, curbing, final surfaces, sidewalks and shoulders, street signs and final cleanup. So those are the changes that have been proposed, uh, to the subdivision regulations, uh, as far as inspections go in section three oh five four two. In appendix D, uh, we have the fee schedule, the only change in the fee schedule is regarding inspections. Previously, on our fee schedule, we had road inspections, a dollar per linial foot, re-inspections, a hundred dollars per event. Those fees were proposed to be eliminated, uh, because of the fact that we've gone out to bid. We were putting together a list of consulting engineers and going forward, projects, subdivision projects, site plan projects will be reviewed by a reviewing engineer, uh, with a fund paid for by the applicant. That's permitted under Massachusetts General Chapter fifty-three G and is fairly standard in most towns. So we have put together this list of consulting engineers. The engineering division will still be involved in every project, they will look at them on the referral, they'll identify the things that are of a concern to them and we'll turn those over to the consulting engineers who will look, do that work, do that vetting, do those calculations and report back to the board, uh, and report back to the pl- planning department. Engineering will still be a resource, if they've got questions about how these work and how those sort of work, they'll still be in, uh, the game. So there is, uh, the change to fees regarding the project review fees under fifty-three G that the planning board's talked about quite a bit. Also in your package is the new Form D subdivision inspection list. Previously, we had just sort of a four-page sheet. Uh, so this is a checklist, uh, in an Excel spreadsheet that folks can go through and click off all those things that have been inspected, when and at what point and at what time. And lastly, in your package is something we have talked about previously, uh, this is the mass dot weighted bid specs. When we get to that point where we have a, um, a, a lot release and there's a bond that's been requested. We have historically asked for quotes, we've asked for things like that. Uh, working with, uh, Thalmah Engineering, uh, Jim McLaughlin here at the podium with us tonight, suggested that we use this mats dot list to establish, uh, values for all those things. So rather than someone giving us a quote that says it's gonna cost this guy fifteen thousand dollars to finish the road, if it says there's, uh, a thousand feet of road and it's eighteen feet wide, uh, here's an incremental cost to put on those. Those are the numbers we will be generating to adopt a bond, much like the last time we did this. The board has that discretion to say, yeah, this is what the numbers add up to, but we're willing to look at a, a number that may be, uh, different from that. Hopefully smaller, I would not like to think that you would make it larger. Uh, but typically, when we do work, when we do a bond, uh, if the project fails, if the bond company does the work, uh, then things are just fine. Uh, but typically, the bond company doesn't do the work, we have to get the money out of the bond company, we have to hire people and we have to hire people, it has to be at a prevailing wage. So mass dots, price list reflects those prevailing wage costs. Uh, so, uh, we think that we have a very good, uh, uh, s- system put together here in sort of bringing our subdivision process into the modern era with, uh, a contemporary inspection protocol, a checklist, uh, and cost associated with those sort of things.
Okay, you're on.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, James McLaughlin, town engineer. I know that, uh, Tom's put all this information in your packet, there's just one thing that, uh, I would like to add. If I could just ask that this be passed out. And that, and this is related to the, to the last item, the cost estimate. So I'll just go through all the other items that Tom has highlighted. And then at the end, maybe talk about this just for a moment. As Mr. Bott's gone over, the inspections that we had previously were, that we have right now are a little bit vague on some of the issues. And we thought by spelling them out a little more clearly and in a more stepwise fashion that follows the construction of the road, we'd be able to, to make everyone's life easier. The builder, the design engineer, as well as the town inspectors, to follow along with the checklist that, that made sense with the, the construction as it progresses. And that's the, the reason for the eleven, eleven items that are in this proposed modification, starting with the review of the subgrade, installation of drain, and other utilities, which would be, in some cases, perhaps sewer. I think the last time that, that was before the board, I mentioned that when, when building these roads, the first, first utility that you install would be the deepest. If there is sewer available, that would be the first to go in. The drain and the water. And that also includes all the services associated with those. And the, the reason for that is, once the, everything is in, and the gravel is placed and, and compacted, you don't want to go back and have to dig it all up to start to install water services or electric service, or whatever the case may be. So in, in the case of all these utilities, it's not just the, the main itself, but also the individual services that you'd want to have installed and confirmed as to the location. Then after that, after we have all the utilities in, we've got the, the final subgrade. And that's just to verify that everything is at the right elevation. And then inspection number five is the gravel base itself. And that's to, to assure that it's compacted and meets the town's requirements under the subdivision control regulations. Subsequent to that, we also want to verify the, the grade of all the catch basin inlets so that, once the pavement is down, everything will drain to those inlets and we won't have a lot of erosion and off-site flooding. And then, once the binder is down, I think I mentioned previously, if there's, if there's curving involved in particular batuminous, that would be placed on the binder outside the, the edge of the proposed paved way. And then when the final pavement goes down, it's, it goes in so that it's an inch and a half or two inches above the, the lip of the curb so that there's, that it locks it into place. And it's not on top, the, the Cape Cod berm is not on top of the finished pavement, but it's on, on the binder. And of course, we get sidewalks, shoulders of the road, street signs, and then final cleanup. And those are the items that we've identified as, as key items to be inspected along, along the way during the construction of the, the subdivision road. And then, Tom mentioned the, the review fee of the four thousand dollars. I think that's probably a, a reasonable amount to expect that will be expended with a, an engineer going out to review and perform all these inspections. At, at a minimum, and probably in some cases, depending on the size of the project, might be more than that. And I think in that case, the, the provisions under fifty-three G would be to obtain an estimate from a consultant. This is what we expect the cost will be going forward. And that's the, the way that it would be established upfront with the, with the applicant. Then on the, the Form D, the subdivision inspection checklist, that really just follows the, the items in the, in the regulations that are proposed with the various eleven steps that we're suggesting you go through. Then finally, on the weighted bid prices. This is taken from Mass DOT every week updates. All the bids that they get in for that, that particular week, and they update this database. And you can go into their, into their database and get, really for any range that you want. If you want to get just for the last month or for the last year. The, the way that this one here is set up is from, for calendar year two thousand seventeen to the end of two thousand eighteen. And what they do is, it's more than just averaging out all the, all the costs that they have from these various bid items. Mass DOT does is they do a statistical analysis. It's almost like a, a bell curve where they have all these different unit prices and they weight them by eliminating the, the extreme low and the, the extreme high. And then they go back and recalculate it again to come on, come up with the, these values. And it's even more in-depth than that. They go through and they will separate it out by size. So for example, the, the first one on, on the list here is clearing and grubbing. And that's per acre, and it's twenty-seven thousand dollars per acre. Well, if, if you go into the, into the database, you'll see that, that's, that's a price that's, that's close to the zero to, say, two acre clearing and grubbing. As you get down to about ten or fifteen acres, the price goes down considerably because you have the economies of scale. So they have a very detailed way of calculating out those numbers. And these are, these are the ones that seem to be close to what we'd be utilizing on a, on a normal subdivision road. And what I did is, on the, the handout that I gave you, is a recent project that, that we just put out to bid. We opened the bids about three weeks ago for a bridge project on John Parker Road. We're, we're removing the existing culvert over the Coonamessett River and replacing it with a new bridge. And some of the, some of the unit pricing that's reflected in, in those bids. And there were four bidders, four competitive bidders. They're all really in the, in the same range of costs from a little over nine hundred forty thousand to one point four million. And if you start to look at the, the items that I've highlighted in yellow, you look at what their unit prices are versus, or as compared to the unit prices that are on this list, you'll find that they're very similar. So for example, the clearing and grubbing number, if you go across, Sumpco is the lowest bidder. Their price, their unit price for, for the clearing and grubbing is there. And then Roach and so on, you can go through and see that they're all really in that, that twenty-seven thousand dollar range. And the other ones that I've highlighted are similar. If you look at, for example, Heart Makes Asphalt, which is number four sixty on, on this list, and it's highlighted in yellow there. The state bid, weighted bid price is a hundred fifty dollars per ton. And if you look at what the various bidders are, for the most part, they're in that one fifty to one sixty, one forty range. So the, the point of that is just that this is a competitive bid that we've just put out within the last month. And the unit prices that, that we're receiving are consistent with the ones that are on this list from, put together by Mass DOT. And the only other thing that I mentioned, and Tom alluded to it with regard to prevailing wages, is, as you know, that the subdivision control law has three methods of securing construction of the subdivision. One is through a bond. The other two are tri-party agreement or cash passbook type security. In, in the case of both of those, where there isn't a bonding company to step in and do the work, really what the, the board's remedy, if someone defaults on completing a subdivision, is to take that money and go out to bid, and we would be faced with these types of, these types of costs. So the only exception to that would be if, in the rare event, that a bonding company actually does the work, which in my experience has been very unusual, or very rare. And I think that's, that's it. I'll, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Anyone have any questions? Yes, Paul.
I have a question. A retain for project review is four thousand dollars. You said that's reasonable. How does that compare with other towns in Commonwealth of a similar size?
Well, that's a great question. And I can tell you that in, personally, I built a, a new house about twenty years ago in the town of Weston. And the planning board there required a site plan review for a single-family home because it was on a scenic road. And the right when I applied, they asked for thirty-five hundred dollar retainer to cover the cost of peer review. And that was basically an engineer that, that reviewed the drainage, all the zoning compliance issues, as well as a landscape architect. And after I went through the whole process, built the house, and everything was done, when I went to get a CO, certificate of occupancy, the landscape architect came out and inspected. And I had, the landscape plan had well over a hundred plants associated with it. It was very detailed. And I was missing one azalea out of probably two dozen. And I couldn't get a CO until I went down to the nursery, got that last azalea and planted it. And then a year later, I got a check in the mail for somewhere around eight hundred dollars, which was what was left over from the thirty-five hundred dollars that I had paid at the beginning. So that's, that's typically the, the way that things work. In, in my prior experience in, in doing a lot of this type of work with, with planning boards and zoning boards, conservation commissions, it's a, four thousand dollars is probably as lower number as you'd run into. I think, as I said, in most cases, once, once the project gets underway, there'll be an estimate from, from someone, some consultant that would be performing these services. And that's when it will be spelled out in a little more detail. But the four thousand dollars is certainly enough to get, get the ball rolling.
Thank you. I have one other question by that. On this table in the Mass DOT weighted bid prices, the footnote in the back says the unit price for six-inch pipe was adjusted downward to reflect the unit price left an eight inch. On the table, the six-inch pipe is a hundred twenty-seven fifty and the eight inch is a hundred twelve. Shouldn't that be reversed?
Well, that I can't.
Anyway, take a look at it.
Yep. That's a good point. John?
I think it's reversed.
So.
Probably is.
What we have in front of us, this document here, I'll just start with the four thousand dollars, which I don't think is out of line. But it says here that, and correct me if it's, if it's wrong, this fee shall be imposed on those applications which, as designated by the planning board, require the services of outside consultants for the review process due to the size, scale, or complexity of a proposed project because of a project's potential impacts or because the town lacks the necessary expertise to perform the review work related to the permit or approval. So I, I think this is for new roads. Is that right? Is this?
Correct.
This is for all.
But I think.
I understand if you're putting a bridge in, maybe you don't have the expertise for that. But I can't imagine that there's a new road going into town of Falmouth that is beyond the engineering department's or the water department's ability to comprehend what's being put in and do the inspections. Or is this fee for town inspections? Because that's what you had said. But it's not, that's not what it says here in writing.
Right. So I think the, the intent is that it be available for outside inspections to be performed in probably a little more detail than what is, is currently available.
Are you saying that's what you want?
Yes.
If somebody's building a new road, you want it to be inspected by an outside consultant?
Right.
Not, not the town of Falmouth Engineering Department anymore?
No, we would be, still be involved, but more as a, in an advisory capacity, not necessarily being out there on a, on a day-to-day basis. And I think this also applies to review of the, the project itself. So for example, the gentleman that was just here talking about the accessory apartment, that's probably not a project that you'd say you, you need peer review on because it's very straightforward and not, really not applicable to the level, level of effort that's involved. On the other hand, some of the more complex projects that, and I know forty Bs are with the zoning board, but the, the idea is that a lot of these things will be applied by, by various boards. But some of the more complicated projects that involve traffic, for example, that you have a, a traffic study done for a particular project. And that's something that we probably would not be comfortable reviewing and evaluating.
So, so this fee is not just for new roads being installed?
It's, it's for everything.
New development, like if you're building a shopping plaza, or if you're adding on to the hospital, or if you're.
Exactly.
A commercial development also.
Yep. Although this, this particular one is, is in the subdivision regulations. I think the, the expectation is that the fifty-three G account would, would be applicable to all planning board reviews, zoning board, conservation, Board of Health, and any other regulatory board that might be involved.
Okay. The way I, the way I understood it was this is going to be for new subdivisions. But this is, you're, you're asking for funds for other projects.
Right. Ultimately.
Consulting fees for other projects.
The, the fifty-three G account would be for, not, not limited to subdivision regulations, although in this particular instance, we're talking about subdivision regulations for, for that particular purpose.
Okay.
Question. So that means we're adding four thousand dollars to every development project we're going to be seeing? This is going to be a new fee on every single project, whether it be a street or any commercial project that's going to go to peer review now, and there'll be another four thousand dollar fee? Is that basically what we're saying?
So if I may. This is a, a standard practice across just about every town in Massachusetts due to this peer review. Historically, the town of Falmouth has handled these in-house. And we, on the taxpayer's note, have essentially subsidized the cost of private development.
So the answer is yes to my question?
The answer is, it is a, a fee to ensure that the reviews are done properly and in a timely fashion and put the price, and put the cost, the onus on where it should be. Fifty-three G consulting accounts will be used for planning board, zoning board of appeals, conservation commission, Board of Health, possibly even the board of selectmen if necessary. But this is all, like I said, largely standard operating procedure just about everywhere. Jim and I talked about it about a year ago, and it's just taken this long to get it to this point. Four thousand dollars is a retainer fee, is refundable, the parts that we don't spend. In Kingston, we had a twenty-five hundred dollar fee. We'd get the twenty-five hundred dollars, we, with the application, we'd send out to the consulting engineer, and he would do a review and go, yeah, it looks like it's going to cost me thirty-two hundred to do this project. So before I could start that consulting engineer, I would have to get another seven hundred dollars from the applicant because I can't enter into an agreement unless I can fund it. So that four thousand dollar amount is largely that sweet spot between the six thousand that Pembroke charged from our discussions with what Michaela's experiences are and what Kingston did to make sure that we've got inadequate funds to get the project started. Because time is money. We don't want people to be held up. And we don't want to have to go back and, and picket people for, for, you know, six or seven hundred dollars if we don't have an adequate source of funds to start the review.
So I'm not sure I'm understanding this. This is changing the world?
He said yes.
He did say yes. I heard that part.
That's what he said.
He says it's a common practice other places, but yes. But. But then it's changing the workload of our engineering department and transferring it to higher, to consultants. Is that right?
Uh, well, the engineering department is very busy, as you just heard. They just, uh, uh, working on bridges, other design things and like that. So the engineering division has, this is one of the tasks that they do, uh, reviews in addition to the other things on their plate. So this would be freeing up some of that time from the engineering division to move on to town projects and not be involved in the minutia of, uh, each individual, uh, development project.
Commercial projects? Would it then expedite the commercial project because they now are controlling, uh, the consultants who are going to be doing this work?
I don't think you can get a quicker turnaround on the planet than Scott Schluter.
It wasn't implying it was a turnaround. I just want to see how this, what the impact is.
Uh, well, the impact is we, we don't expect really, uh, any difference in the timeframe to get these things done. You've got a requirement to call for inspection forty-eight hours before, uh, we go out and do the inspections. So, uh, the fee, uh, is frankly not going to change things and some of the folks, and most of the folks who are on the list are, uh, engineers, uh, within the area. We ha- and I don't want to get into the particulars, but we had some apparently play pool from afar, way away who said, I would love to be your, your dude, uh, technical term. Um, and we've said, you know, frankly, the portal-to-portal charge for those things is just, you know, beyond the pale. So this is, uh, this is where we're going.
So it's an engineer full employment program?
This is where we're trying to go.
With, with the board's, uh, vote, yes.
Yes, and the town's approval also.
Well, the town is, uh, the, we, we, we talked with, uh, Frank Duffy last year about fifty-three G to make sure we didn't have to go to town meeting to accept this provision of Massachusetts general. He said, no, we don't. It's perfectly within our, uh, guys to do that and, and that's where we're moving as the town. Uh, whether it's in the subdivision regulations or not, we'll have fifty-three conze- fifty-three G consultants onboard for all those various boards and committees I just mentioned.
I just have a question. It, because it's not just our board, I just heard this is conservation, all the other boards, do the, the, uh, the board granting approval, do they have the right to waive this? Or is this an automatic?
No, it's, it, uh, it's the discretion of that.
It's the discretion of the board. So if they decide a smaller project and it's pretty straightforward and you don't need to have a plan re- peer review, we can, it can be waived.
Or they could probably reduce-
Or change the number.
Yeah, change the number.
So it says here that the board, meaning the planning board, may engage engineers, planners, lawyers, designers, or other appropriate professionals who can assist the board in analyzing a project to ensure compliance with all relevant laws, ordinance, bylaws, regulations. And then further down it says an additional fee may be collected from the applicant if during the review the above deposit is found insufficient to cover actual cost of re- of the review. And we also have something called the Cape Cod Commission that does reviews. I, I don't know. I, I thought this was just for new subdivision roads, but, uh, obviously it's not, so.
Well, two, two points. Fifty-three G is going to be townwide and boardwide. In this case, we're asking to add it into the subdivision regulations. So there's, uh, it's, it's part of the policy.
You said, I, I just need a clarification because I'm getting a little, a little confused here. When you say it's going to be adopted, who adopts it? So I know other boards have, are, I, I see them listed here, but how does, how does this get adopted, please? What's the process?
It would be each of those boards rendering that, uh, that policy decision about when, when they're going to.
Well, if one of the two boards decide not to adopt this, the other boards can and this board does not?
Correct.
So it's individual boards?
Correct.
Decisions.
But in this case, we've been discussing subdivision regulations, so that's why we're having that discussion about fifty-three G tonight in the context of the subdivision regulations.
But there are other regulations that the same thing could be adopted by the other boards to deal with them.
Correct. In fact, in the conservation commission's current wetland regulations, they actually have a provision very similar to this, uh, that they'll, uh, since be, and it's one of those things that's been in there for a very long time. So in this process, uh, conservation administrator said, yeah, we're probably looking at adopting our policy as well.
Yeah.
I'm just curious. The fee goes in, does that go into the DPW operating budget or go into the general fund?
Nope.
It goes into a, I think it's a special fund.
Yeah, special.
Goes to the DPW fund?
No, it doesn't, no. So if I may-
So if you're, if you're offsetting some of the workload, why wouldn't it go to the DPW operating budget?
Wait, there's an answer.
So the fifty-three G accounts go into a separate account. Uh, that money is the client's money, the applicant's money, and we're holding it for them. So they get billed, uh, the engineer does things, reviews things, they send me a report, they send me a bill. So from that money, we pay that consulting engineer. So we collect four thousand dollars at the start. If their review costs twenty-two hundred dollars, after the, the books are shut, the project's in, we send them a check for eighteen hundred dollars plus interest. We don't pay very good interest, by the way. Uh, towns are very bad about having high interest views.
And that will keeping is done in your office?
Correct.
And further back in this document, it's saying you need to, uh, identify, uh, or define planning board agent.
Yeah, I'm the planning board agent, uh, but it's not in our subdivision regulations. That's an- another section of the bylaw we'll have to adopt. But, uh, but essentially the planning board agent is the person the planning board says, y- you're in charge of that. And that's typically your staff.
Do you have any other, any other little funds that you're bookkeeping for up there?
I don't think so.
Something new?
Something new in Falmouth, but old under the sun.
Does this apply to all site plan reviews that the planning board does, everything we're talking about?
I'm getting it that it's more the construction aspect.
If, if Web M D came in today, or whoever they were when they came, shout here, convenient M D, uh, we would say, yeah, we're going to ask for four thousand dollars to help you review our planning.
I needed a yes or no to my question. So it is a yes, it applies, we're adding four thousand dollars to everything we do.
Potentially, not necessarily. Is that right?
If the work's less, it's less, but the upfront, they're going to put up four thousand bucks and if we don't spend it, they get their money back.
That's correct.
But we are adding four thousand dollars to every single project we review.
And does each board get to-
I just wanted to understand that I'm-
And does each board get to add an amount? You know, if it goes, if conservation is involved, do they get to?
The, the, the process would be the same. You get a project in, you send it to reviewing engineer.
We could be adding sixteen thousand dollars to a project real quick.
The reviewing engineer looks at, uh, uh, what it's going to cost and says, I'm going to need, you know, thirty-two hundred to do this review. And so that's where, now, interestingly enough, in my experience in this, uh, we have had instances where the reviewing engineer pointed out, you know, six different things that needed to be addressed. And the applicant addressed four of them and the reviewing engineer said, well, what about these other two? And so if you don't answer the questions, then you've got another review letter that comes with it. You may recall a project we had, uh, i- i- in Woods Hole where we had some difficulty getting the facts out of the reviewing engineer. Well, those are the things that cost the applicant time and money. If we point out six things you need to address, if you don't address them, then that continues on that review. So, uh, the better your, uh, your response to the reviewing engineer in looking at those regulations, the quicker your project goes and the less it costs.
Being a little bit facetious, however. We've been th- talking about streamlining, making Falmouth a more attractive town for builders to come into, whether it's affordable housing or whatever it is, and is there some incentive here for someone to come in and build?
I think when we look at the, uh, 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 and, and let's look at a recent project, Cape Estates. All right, Cape Club Estates, uh, you know, we had an issue with the engineer, the review, the installation and things like that. The delay, the, 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 the lag in getting from point A to point B was on getting the information from the applicant. Once again, we are attempting to, uh, streamline, to make clear what the provisions are required for inspections. And we are in fact taking that money that the taxpayers have been funding to pay the engineering division to underwrite the cost of private development and putting it back, that onus back on the private developer that says, these things cost money. It costs the engineering division money. It takes time away from their time and that cost should be borne by the developer and the development community, not by the taxpayers. And that's the whole gist of fifty-three G. There are a lot of things that come out of the engineering division, projects and design review and things like that. This is one of those things, uh, that we can put into its proper place from my perspective in the development community and ensure that they have that review done properly, uh, and in a timely fashion.
And you said that most other communities in Massachusetts have already done this.
Yes, I, I can't s- I, I, I can't, I can't think of one, uh, that doesn't have fifty-three G consulting engineers. Now, many of those are smaller communities that don't have engineering divisions, but Plymouth, I'm fairly certain where I live is a city of, a town, excuse me, sorry, Plymouth, a town of fifty thousand, uh, with an engineering division. But much like a large town, there's a lot of projects that the engineering is involved in, in fixing stuff. And that design comes through our engineering division.
So you don't believe this is going to be in any way a deterrent for a builder to come in to Falmouth and build a new development of any sort?
I don't.
Tom, is, would our engineering department do the current initial review like we get here? But this would be an additional cost on the developer to make sure that our engineering department's concerns were met? Or does our engineering department have complete hands-off then on any project?
We get the same referral. So the referral comes in, it goes out to, you know, building, to health, to conservation, all those folks with their comments. Engineering will look and say, here's four things that are, 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 I'd like you to look at. So, and as those people are, are putting it together, particularly in early days, because after someone's been on the property for, you know, a couple of years and they're fo- more familiar with the bylaws, uh, then they're going to be more autonomous. But we expect that those folks are going to be leaning on the engineering division, uh, as they uh, get up to speed on our rigs and things like that. How do we deal with this? How do we deal with that? So, uh, you know, the engineering division isn't going away, nor is their insight or their institutional knowledge about projects. We're just going to take this cost that's been borne by the taxpayers and give it to the building to the commu- uh, uh, community.
Okay. Well, I'm beginning to think that we should take this and think about it and discuss it further after we've-
I would think you would.
Done some further thinking. And thank you for all your work in putting this together.
Can I ask a few more questions?
Yes, John, of course. I thought you had finished, but you hadn't. Okay.
Well, we just talked about the fees. But, um, in the existing regulations that we show here, there's five, five, uh, inspections for a new road. And under the proposed, there's eleven inspections. And I was just wondering, um, a couple of things. Could they be consolidated a little bit, like maybe inspection, seven, eight, nine, ten, and eleven be done at one time or uh, s- any form of consolidation? And, and the other real concern I have, especially listening to what, what's being proposed here. You mentioned Cape Club and, and the engineer that was on the job said that they put the dense grade down and compacted it and they paved it the next day because they were concerned about rain. So all of us in the business know if you got dense grade down and it's compacted, you do not want it to get rained on. But we're looking for a forty-eight hour, um, notice between inspections. So which would be forty-eight hour notice between having a dense grade down and compacted, inspect it, and you could pave. So I asked a couple of different questions there. One is consolidation. And, and the other is my concern for, for one, one of the inspections. Have you thought about any way to consolidate some of the inspections?
Sure, some of these can, can be consolidated. And what we got to the, uh, forty-eight hours, I, I'm, there's nothing to say that, uh, say we're going to put down the, uh, the base, um, in forty-eight hours and then in another day we're going to, uh, put down the binder. So you, you're giving forty-eight hour advance notice on one and seventy-two on, on the next. Uh, but doing it both at the same time. So you can, you can certainly do that and, uh, I mean, most people, if, if, again, this is my experience doing these things with, um, usually in the construction business, you're looking at the weather, you're looking at what's going on and you're planning your work accordingly. So if it's going to rain for three days next week, um, you don't plan on working on those particular things for those three days. And that's just the way that you plan out your work. Uh, and it's, and it, it's not just rain, it's, it goes with frost and, uh, all kinds of weather conditions, but that's how you-
Well, we all try to plan ahead, but this, this is New England, so.
Oh, I-
We all get surprises with the weather.
I understand.
So I, I just have a concern about that, but also the consolidation. If there's a way to consolidate these, I just, I mean, putting a road in, it just seems that some of these last items are done at the, all at the same time. The sidewalk is-
Right, they could all, yes, some of those can be consolidated, yep.
You know, if you're, if you're doing Cape Cod berm on the road, then that's done with the final paving. All that is done at one time for, for an inspection. Especially if the developer's going to be paying some engineer to come out and do all these inspections. Just trying to save some time and money, but-
Sure.
And another question I have is on the yellow sheet here that, that you passed out to us for, uh, uh, costs. Um, have you made any determination for, I'm talking about for roads now, of what, uh, using these, uh, the price list, uh, what a price per foot would be for a new road for a bond? That's such a, you're trying to, you're trying to predict, uh, cost for a bond.
Right.
That's my understanding anyway.
Yep. And I think the, 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 the yellow highlighted items are items that are included in the, um, the mass, uh, uh, weighted bid price. So those are, those are items to compare versus a, a recent, uh, job that's out to bid here in town that-
I understand, I heard the bridge part and all that, but if, if someone's going to put in a two thousand foot road, do you have any idea using these numbers what the price per foot would be?
Uh, I haven't done that. Uh, I could, I could, certainly could.
Just curious.
Yep.
I'd like to know that too, what the cost per linear foot. You can almost, some of our linear foot, but some of it are done by ton and I don't know how many tons, I don't know how to-
It'd be really hard for a layman to-
Right.
Really hard for a layman to make this determination. I'm just curious. I'm not saying it's right or wrong. I'm just curious if it's six hundred dollars a foot or three hundred dollars a foot or a thousand dollars a foot or, or what it would be. I know what it costs to do a road-
Yep.
In today's numbers, um, without using union, um,
Mm-hmm.
labor. So I'm just curious. I'm not, I'm not saying I, I'm just doing it. You have to have something. I understand that, so.
We can go, I'll go through the numbers. I'm, uh, expecting it to be in the three hundred plus dollar foot range. At least that's, that's a number that, uh, typically I would carry when in private industry, when trying to look at, uh, uh, evaluating a subdivision.
So if somebody's putting in a two thousand foot road, it'd be a six hundred thousand dollar bond or however, I don't know how the bonds work exactly, but-
Right. Well, a lot of the items that are on this list, you know, usually what happens when the subdivision's approved, um, there's a covenant that goes along with it, the, the applicant doesn't post a bond that same day that the subdivision's approved. So a lot of these items, like, uh, the clearing, grubbing and the, uh, subgrade, all that stuff ends up being done, uh, prior to an applicant coming in and asking for a bond. So, um, these are all the costs that are involved. A lot of them, uh, should be, or you would think typically are done prior to, uh, posting a bond.
Sure. Okay. Uh, no other questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Paul, I think you-
Yeah, I just want to clarify something. The comment was made earlier that we may be adding another sixteen thousand dollars to a project. This particular board is talking about a four thousand. Any other board would have to come up with their own amount and protocol. Is that correct?
Correct.
And our amount is reasonable, as you say, because there's a lot of involvement with the engineering department. So ours could, could be higher than the others. So we're not really adding sixteen thousand dollars to a project. We're adding some fees that may be reimbursed if they're not used by various-
Correct.
Committees. Okay, thank you.
And, and for the record, I have never seen a sixteen thousand dollar review in twenty-five years, not even close.
Well, the comment was made, we're adding sixteen thousand dollars to a project. I just want to make sure.
I may want to come up with some examples about reviews that are done by, uh, conservation and some other things before we close this conversation out. I don't have the facts in front of me right now, but I think I can get some.
Well, that was a question I posed. If every, every board can impose-
They can, and they do.
And, you know, I mean, if conservation wants to study the, uh, you know, spotted, uh, salamander or something, then they-
And, you know, I mean, if conservation wants to study the, uh, you know, spotted salamander or something, and they hire a consultant to do that, what would that cost? And that cost would be added to the project.
Charlotte, you had a question.
I do, I'm just curious about what, about how much, in, in, say in the past year, how much of the workload at the engineering department? What, what count, would these commercial projects account for?
Well, um, I haven't, I wouldn't break it down by one particular category, I can tell you that the, the one engineer, um, that does the majority of our work in terms of plan review for both the zoning board and the planning board, uh, is probably three quarters of his time. Full-time, uh, going through reviews, and then what is particularly, uh, time-consuming is to review it three, four, five times, uh, because there's just a continuous disagreement on some things that, uh, somehow don't, doesn't get resolved. And that, that happens frequently and it's, uh, ends up being a, a real drain on, uh, on, um, our time.
John?
I, I just have two other questions, one, uh, for Tom and one for, um. I'm, I'm, um, CPC's representative for, um, the new road being installed on Willetts Way. And so I, I had a question that was, was not able to be answered regarding town inspections. Is the town doing inspections on forty B roads?
As of today, we are.
Is it a requirement? That's what I'm asking.
No, uh, it's not, um, and, uh, I think that's still to be resolved. As of right now, uh, the expectation is that we will. Um, I'm not, uh, sure, under, and there's really no authority to do that under the, the current regulatory setup.
If the ZBA put it in their decision, would it be?
Yeah, uh.
Part of, part of their findings?
Sure, it would, um, you know, I, I think, um, the approach that we've taken to date is that, um, the, the zoning board is, is, issues a, uh, a decision on really any type of permit, not just a comprehensive permit, with, with a great number of conditions and, uh, the way that I've looked at it is that's, the zoning enforcement officer, the building inspector's office is responsible for enforcing all of those conditions. Now, uh, in fairness to, to that department, there are a lot of things in there that probably, um, would overburden them and not really be, uh, something that they typically would be involved in. Uh, we get a lot of complaints recently, and this is, it seems to be a flurry of activity in the comprehensive permit arena. Um, a lot of, um, complaints from people coming in saying, uh, you know, there's drainage issues or there's flooding on their property where they never used to have it and that type of thing. Uh, and, and a lot of other impacts that aren't anticipated or maybe not, not, uh, expected that, uh, someone's going to be out there taking a look at them. And, and that's a frequent, uh, uh, drain on, on our resources right now.
But that, that's roads in general.
Uh, no, that's on, uh, forty Bs in particular.
In particular, okay.
There, there's a, a, a lot of that, and I think, um, you know, internally, you have to have some discussions on how that, how that should go forward. Maybe, uh, fifty-three G is a better, better, uh, uh, way of handling that for that type of work. Because certainly not, you know, in the, under the subdivision control law and under the regulations, uh, there, there are provisions for the town engineer to do certain things or engineering to do certain things. There, there really isn't that in the, um, forty B comprehensive permit arena, that's not really spelled out that way.
Okay, thank you for that answer. And, and then for Tom, what we're discussing here this evening, we, we, uh, not too long ago, um, had the engineering, if an engineer stamps a plan for a, a, uh, commercial development, that it was acceptable for a final occupancy permit. Is this going to sup- supersede that or is it in addition to, or?
No, there's, there, that, 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 that plan still comes, uh, with a certificate of occupancy. So they're going to provide us an as-built, the subdivision requ- plan requires as-built, uh, currently in their regulations.
Not just subdivision, but you, you mentioned, uh.
Site plan review.
Site plan review, right.
So, yeah, let's go back to my, uh, my, my, my previous example, if convenient M D came in today and we assigned them a consulting engineer, uh, at the end of the day, when that as-bid would come in, that would go to that consulting engineer to confirm it. Because I'm a firm believer in a chain of custody. If you looked at the plans and you reviewed the plans and said this plan works, and you did inspections on the site to make sure things work, if it comes back with a certificate of occupancy, you should pretty much know what happened out there on the site and you should know what happened. So it should be, you know, relatively seamless to get that done because you've been on the site.
So then one other suggestion, or one suggestion I may have is, in, in this document, says that each developer should have an original meeting with the town planner, with the, uh, building commissioner, and I believe with the engineering department. And if this gets adopted, then it should be with that consulting.
Absolutely.
Person also, if there's going to be one involved.
Correct, and we did that, uh, that's a, a fairly standard practice in lots of places, it's not in our regulations here. We started off Cape Estates with the pre-construction conference to make sure everybody was on the same page there. It's just the best way to make sure everybody understands what the procedures are for, uh, doing inspections, for calling for things, and so everybody understands what the conditions are. So you don't have somebody giving you, I'm, I'm, sorry about that. Uh, clarity, expectations make for better projects, uh, and makes people more accountable for those sort of things. And there's no surprises, people hate surprises, and I don't want to surprise anybody.
So should that requirement for the pre?
It, it's, it's, uh.
It is in here?
It's actually the one thing in my, well, for, uh, formatting that I didn't, uh, bold. Uh, prior to any con- construction, the developer, their project engineer and their contractor must meet with a pre-construction meeting with the town planner, Falmouth Engineering Division Boards Inspector and other appropriate parties, so that Boards Inspector would be the consulting engineer. And we can clarify that language if you want.
Could this possibly streamline it for the Cape Club, for instance, if they had this four thousand dollars and there was a consulting engineer that's already happened? Could he have come that day and said, yes, it's okay, and streamlined it and saved us all this trouble? Or is this just an addition, can it actually help with the streamlining the project and speed things up instead of just slowing them down is my question?
That was asked earlier and Tom didn't think it would make a difference.
No, I think.
I specifically referenced the example, he keeps using referrals to M D, I'm saying with the Cape Club, which we had a big issue on.
Right.
And because they, we knew the rain was coming and they paved over it. If they had a peer review and the peer review came out and tested says it's okay, would that have streamlined it?
Well, the peer re- review would have wanted to inspect it before it got paved.
Right, but they could have been there to do it, they, they, the contractor could say, okay, get here, I paid you four thousand dollars, you gotta come now.
Wasn't it like five o'clock in the afternoon?
Forty-eight hour notice, Jim.
Well, if it's a safe notice, then it's not going to, then the answer to my question is no.
In the case of Cape Estates, when the developer asked for permission to pave, the answer was, no, you haven't had those inspections. You should not pave. And they said, I think it's okay at the developer's risk, and so they did. The delay for Cape Estates was in getting the bond released because they didn't go through the inspection protocol. They decided to go forward with their risk and then we had to assess, what actually do we have to do to make sure this project is fully done? And so there was a delay there, it had nothing to do with who the consulting engineer was, it had to do with, you've asked to pave, the town planner and the inspect, engineering consult, and consultant with Falmouth Engineering said, no, you're not ready because we haven't inspected compaction. And that was the delay, because people thought, I'll get this done and I'll save myself some time, but it didn't work out that.
You know, time is moving on and I think we've got a lot of other things, and so I think we need to have more discussion of this after we've digested it a little bit more.
There you go.
Um, Jim, can I just make one point, uh, with, with regard to Mr. Fox's question? I, I've had a lot of projects where we're out doing compaction testing with a, with a private company, getting that testing done. And literally, the paver is right there at the job, ready to go, um, and the only thing that's holding him up is us getting our compaction tests done right then and there. Literally ten or fifteen minutes before they start to pave. And so it does, there are instances where it can be beneficial to have everything lined up and, and do it that way.
Thank you, and I'm, I know we'll have more discussion on this, and I appreciate your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
All right, and if I may, I would suggest that, uh, given our schedule for October, uh, that we look at continuing, uh, this discussion to our October fifteenth meeting.
Okay. Okay, now we move on to planning board discussion, the first one is senior center, seven eighty Main Street. What?
Didn't you just have a hearing?
No, this was a discussion, I didn't think it was a hearing.
Did you have a hearing on the subdivision regulations?
No, as far as.
Yes, you have.
Well, it was, wasn't it, I'm sorry, Mike.
Are we allowed to speak?
Yeah, it should be, I'm sorry, I messed up, thank you.
I've been in practice since November first nineteen seventy. I've done, I told you, I think forty-two subdivisions in Falmouth, I've done at least twenty other subdivisions. I've never had a town have to finish a project. Ballymead was foreclosed, it was auctioned off, and CLSV bought the rights and finished it. Bass River Savings Bank auctioned off Craggy Ridge and it was done. The, uh, uh, Bass River Savings Bank auctioned off Grassmere and it was done. Those were in default, but the town didn't finish it. The mortgage companies finished it. And, and one of the projects that I was working on, um, I worked for Recall Management. So, looking at creating a performance bond based on the DPW mass, uh, uh, estimates is, in my mind, is completely overblown. If you remember, I, I described how the cost of setting a, a bound according to them is extraordinary compared to what we commonly do. So you can do what you want, but I'm telling you, I think that the assertion that somehow someday you're going to end up building a road, it, uh, I, I don't see it happening. And, uh, as far as, uh, at the Cape Club, I would invite you all to go up there, they're about to go test it. And what they're going to use is a nuclea density machine. And what it does, it emits radioactive waves into the gravel. And I, I'll tell you what, I won't be on the site because, uh, I don't like the very thought that they have to use that kind of machine. But if that's what you guys want, you're going to get it done, but I'll tell you what, I don't like it. So I look at the, the, uh, uh, some of the things that have been said, there's an industrial subdivision called Evergreen. It's been in, um, Charlie Rowley has been the, uh, consulting engineer for the town of Mashpee, and he's not received the kind of money that's been bandied about. So, uh, I do work in many different towns, and yes, there are some towns that require us to, to post money, but not, not to the extent that I'm hearing. So I would look at this as, this is going to be much more expensive than it is in other towns based on what I see. I do work in Bourne, I do work in, um, Mashpee, and I've done some work off Cape at the minute, at the moment, and. These, the numbers and the procedures is very complex. And there's a saying I've often heard, which is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And you're creating a lot of new effort that, as I said, I've designed twenty-three miles of roads in Falmouth. And the other thing, it would have been nice to have this on the, shown because I'm sure the people at home couldn't understand whatever was going on. So I hope you will consider my testimony, thank you.
Thank you, Mike, is there anyone else? Okay, so, planning board discussion, again, the senior site, the senior center at seven eighty Main Street. Request for administrative approval and you're on.
All right, uh, if I may, Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, Peter McConerty, Deputy DPW Director is here with us. Uh, we recently had, uh, a question about narrowing the roadway for, uh, the parking lot, uh, to the right side of the Gus Canty Center, if you're looking at it. Planning Board's approval was for twenty-four feet, uh, there was a request to reduce that width to something to the effect of sixteen feet. In consulting with the, uh, uh, fire safety officer, Lieutenant Trot, uh, he asked for a minimum of eighteen feet for that roadway. And at that point, I'll turn it over to, uh, Peter McConerty, who has, uh, prepared the diagrams for us.
Good evening, Peter McConerty, Deputy Director of Public Works. I only have two slides tonight to, uh, to go through, so I'm going to do it a little reverse and a little out of order to make it, I, I think, a little more uh, convenient and a little more logical to go through. In two thousand seventeen, October of two thousand seventeen, um, a company, Tetra Tech, had originally done, uh, performed the plans for the, uh, for the senior center, it was a, it was a set of at least six plans. And one of the plans was a layout and materials plan, and as you can see, I, I can use the, um, the, uh, the pointer. As you can see, this back parking lot is, uh, is included in the project and it's all been repaved. And, um, it's all been repaved and, well, actually, before I do that, can I, I can I do the, uh, I think it'll be easier if I do the driveway first because the other plans will show on them. The driveway on this side over here, uh, is twenty feet on this plan, okay? It's a one-way driveway that goes out to a parking down in this area and goes out to Dillingham. On this plan, this is the current layout and materials plan that was done through, um, um, coastal engineering. Shows this entrance still one-way as being twenty-four feet wide. And it leads down to the lower area where the parking is and then leads out to Dillingham. It's confusing in this area if we leave this twenty-four feet wide. Vehicles are going to be coming in through, through Main Street, through this entrance here, or they'll be coming in through this entrance over here and coming through the parking lot and coming back down and going down to this lower parking out, uh, parking lot and out to Dillingham. We do not want them coming back into this area, um, coming up on this side. This is already one-way in front of the senior center, and it's one-way in front of this section of the police station and they can go back out again. So we want to leave this area one-way, so we're looking at bringing it down to, uh, from twenty-four feet to eighteen feet. And I believe Mel, the contractor had talked to, uh, the fire department, and I believe the town plan had also talked with the fire department. And eighteen feet would be wide enough to bring that driveway back down to, um, to eighteen feet. One other thing in this driveway is that if it stays at twenty, twenty-four feet, the buffer strip, um, between the senior center and the, um, hotel, there's trees in that area. Those trees would have to be, come down, and there's also a slope in that area that leads down to a retaining wall that has about a ten-foot drop down to the lower parking lot. It would destabilize the slope, so they'd have to put a fence in and they'd have to put some kind of, it would add more construction to the contract. So one of the benefits of bringing it from twenty-four down to eighteen, um, would be to slide this side of the, that side of that parking, um, strip, that driveway going down to the lower area over six feet. And that would, it would be able to put the sidewalk in as it's shown on the plan, and it would be able to stay within that layout without touching that slope and cutting those trees down. Aesthetic-wise, uh, leaving those trees at this point, if you, if you go over there, you cannot see through those trees to the motel. So if we took them down, you'd be looking right at the, at the front of the, the motel. So that's basically the first request to reduce that down to eighteen feet. And then the second request is in the back here of the parking lot, I showed you the original plan that had the complete back parking lot. This new plan, they proposed was not to do any work within that back parking lot where that Ray Paltz building was, where, uh, you can walk down behind and go down to the, go down to the field. This plan goes about twenty feet off the back of the proposed senior center. Just along where the, the edges of this, you'd have new parking right along the back edge of the building, and about two feet outside of that, it stops. What had happened during construction, if you go out there now, this area is a lay-down area, materials all, all over the place, there's been trenching in there, there's been a. What had happened during construction, if you go out there now, this area is a lay-down area, materials all, all over the place, there's been trenching in there, there's been electrical trenching, they, they just recently put in, um, some pipes in the area. There's a transformer pad that's been going over in that area, so the back lot is getting cut up. What our intention would like to be, is if I, if you don't mind, I'd like to go back to the, to the first plan. Our intention would like to, uh, would, would like to do this parking lot exactly, um, as the original plan that was done. What's gonna happen if we don't do that parking lot is you're gonna have all this area, all the way back, all this driveway, all this lower area, the whole front parking lot, this area's gonna be done, this whole area over in front of the police station's done, and this driveway going down, the police station's gonna be done, and there's gonna be a line right across that area, and this whole back of the parking lot's gonna be the original parking lot that has grass, and some of the areas have cracks in it, there's a few trenches in it. What we wanted to do was mill and pave that whole lot, and then re-stripe it to actual conforming parking spaces. If you go back there right now, some of the parking spaces are different widths, um, the, the ADA accessibility parking is not really conforming in that back area. So, what's it, we're, what we're requesting is to go back to this original plan at the beginning, and include this, to be able to mill and pave two inches on this, and then re-stripe it, um, as it's shown. And by re-striping it, we would be able to get eleven standard spaces on the, um, basketball court side, eleven standard spaces on the building side, and then two ADA spaces, um, up just adjacent to the Ray Paltz building.
Pat? When we first saw this, almost two years ago, we had a couple of comments, one was the angled parking, which is now incorporated, one was a walkway through the parking, which is incorporated. And we were told nothing was gonna be done back there, and I understand what you're saying now, but there's at least ten handicap parking spaces there, and you reduced them down to two. And they've been used for the ball field when the Commodores play. So, can you explain why you're going from ten or twelve, I think there's ten, down to two in that back area when there's always been many more than that?
Yeah, the ADA spaces that are in the back lot right now are not conforming, if you go back and look at those ADA spaces, they are not conforming. Um, so, what are you gonna end up with, is you're gonna end up with a brand-new facility, uh, if we don't touch the back parking lot with non-conforming, uh, ADA spots in the back lot. So, what we're just trying to do is we're trying to clean it up. Um, you could add additional ADA spaces in there, every two ADA spaces in there, you either have to add a five-foot, um, hatched area, or an eight-foot hatched area for, uh, for vans. The plan does show adequate ADA, as it is on the plan here, those spaces in the back would just be additional ADA spaces. With talking with the, um, the, um, with Jill Bishop, the, uh, Senior Center Coordinator, um, she was requesting to use some of the spots in the back of the building for their trucks, for their vans. So, it would be out of the way of, um, any of the patrons or the clients going into the building, and it would be used, be able to be used for their parking, uh, overnight parking for their vans and their trucks. They have, they have two RTA vans, uh, they're like fourteen, sixteen passenger vans, and there, there's a couple of trucks between there and the, uh, pickup trucks between there, and a van between there and the rec center that they use. And I do remember the, uh, the, the, um, walkway going through, and, um, the other requests, and the angled parking.
I follow up on that, I think it's a good idea to pave that area and improve the ADA spaces, I think you just need more than two, because it serves not only the Senior Center, but also the people going to Commodores. So, I would suggest you add, you don't need ten, but you need a couple more, because any time I've walked through there, there've been spaces, so they're not all taken, but I think you need more than two.
Yep, I think what we can, so there's already two here, you could easily incorporate, there's three more standard spaces right next to that, you can easily incorporate that as to being a van spot and two more standard spots, so you'd have four, instead of the two, you'd have four. And then, the re, by the request of the, um, the Senior Center Director, um, the Council on Agent Director, these spaces would be used for her cars, vans, trucks, these would be used for, uh, loading, unloading, and what have you on this side, uh, right against the building. So, and you could easily get two more spaces.
I'm suggesting you consider it, that's all, thank you.
Well, so, what we like at Public Works, what we like to do is, once you, once you pave, mill and pave it, it's all black, so it's start from scratch. So, um, and sometimes you might be able to pull a few extra inches or a half a foot on one side of the parking lot or the other side of the parking lot, and be able to manipulate the parking to get something more in there. But, once, once that's milled and that's paved, they'd, they'd like to do that under the, uh, while the project is under construction, and not wait until the contractor leaves and then have to come back or what have you, um, would be able to incorporate that, incorporate that. And I think, uh, I know, we'd be able to get at least the two spaces on the other side, so you'd have four.
I don't think there'd be any problem with that.
I think that's a good suggestion, Paul, yeah, Jim.
Just a quick comment on the, on the road, I think, uh, you know, we've had a lot of people in question about a twenty-foot road and there's eighteen-foot road, the key in here, this is a one-way street.
One-way.
And that's why I think it's not a problem, but to have anything less, if you, than eight, you know, eighteen, twenty, I think our standard is twenty or twenty?
Eighteen, is it?
No, it's twenty.
No, it's twenty.
And we're being asked to reduce it, and the only way I'm going along with it is 'cause it's a one-way road.
Um, I'm not sure I understand, we've got two plans here, and the plan approved before shows angled parking in front of the Senior Center, and the pathway, uh, through, uh, the bank, the other banks of parking. Are you planning to keep to this, this, uh, plan here? So, the only changes you're making are here to, on this roadway, and at the back, or did you intend to change this part of the front?
Nope, we're not touching, alls we're touching is, uh, alls we're going to do is narrow the driveway down to the lower parking area, and this area, the lower parking area, and, uh, this parking area back here, we're just gonna reconfigure that. Everything else stays the same, every, actually, I'm in a discussion.
Angled parking, pathway, the whole?
Actually, if, if you go out to the site right now, the curbing is already in, the straight curbing, the granite curbing, slope curbing is already in, so, the parking lot is pretty well set. You can see the, uh, the driveways where, how they're set up, yeah, we wouldn't be touching, it was just these two, two items.
Okay, thank you, anybody else? Okay, well, they're looking for administrative approval, and I suspect you would like it tonight, right?
So, so what had happened is, I was, I was trying to get on to the agenda for last week, um, and I wasn't able to get on it, the contractor, uh, is out there, the, the granite contractor's out there, and he wants to just finish up the site, but, um, it's up to the Board's discretion to, uh-
Does anybody object?
No.
No? I think it's great, and if you can have the four handicap spaces, because there are a number of people who watch the Commodores games.
Yep, so, so, uh, just to clarify, so what we'll look at is, uh, in the back, I shouldn't look back at the other plan, but in the back area, you'll have one, a hatch, one, a hatch, and another one.
Right.
So, most likely, there'll be two vans, most likely, and two standards back there.
Right, that's great.
Be four spaces.
So, do you wanna take a vote to approve of it?
Please.
Okay.
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good for them, thank you very much.
Thank you.
And, thank you to DPW for coming out and taking care of business, uh, after dark, thank you.
We, we love being here. We joined the Board of Selectmen last night also.
Thank you.
That's why you're so good at, uh, running the, uh, displays there, you've got some experience.
Okay, um, we have wastewater management report, and this is a summary of it, and Paul, were you gonna speak to this? Oh, Tom?
May I ask, uh, I, I, I think we have a number of, uh, residents who may not be here for the wastewater management-
Oh.
-program, I'm gonna anticipate they might be here for the question about Ostrom Road subdivision. And if that was the case, uh, I, I, I was gonna offer if the Board wanted to take things out of order, uh, it, it's up to you.
I don't have a problem with that, does anybody else have a problem with taking Ostrom Road out?
No.
This is just our discussion, so I'd say we can do it, we're not disturbing anybody, but we can take a vote to take it out of order.
Some of?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So, uh, Mr. Bunker is here from, uh, BSS Design, uh, to, uh, uh, tell us what's up with the Ostrom Road subdivision plan.
Thank you, um, my name's Tom Bunker with BSS Design, uh, thank you for considering, uh, taking this, uh, out of order. Hope we can do it quickly, we'll see. Uh, this has to do with a subdivision that was approved in nineteen eighty-six. It, uh, created six lots along Ostrom Road, uh, lots, if you can see where my little hand is there, one, two, three, four, five, and six. And in the subdivision approval, it was stated that, uh, every, uh, of the six lots all would have three bedrooms, except that one of the lots could have, uh, four bedrooms. And that, that lot should be identified on the plan. And here we have the, uh, recorded plan, but the, no lot is identified on the plan as being the lot that can have, uh, four bedrooms. I have this, yeah, let me see. Hold on one second. I have this GIS plan, I've conferred, this is the, the, six lots here, four of them are built on, uh, I have the assessor's cards from these four lots, it says, highlighted that this number sixty-eight has three bedrooms, uh, number seventy-two has three bedrooms, number eighty-two has three bedrooms, and, um, I had one more. The four lots that are built have, each have three bedrooms. And, I have the deed here, so I represent the, uh, buyers of Lot Four that has no house on it. I have the deed to Lot Four, this is the deed out of the original subdivider, the, from the Prothero Trust, Prothero Trust. On the second page, this deed alone says that the grantor here and hereby assigns all the right title in interest present and future under said planning board decision to construct a four-bedroom dwelling on Lot Four. Uh, I have the other deeds, if, if you'd like, I can show them to you, I've, uh, submitted them to the planning department. Out of the six lots in the, uh, the chain of all the deeds, uh, out of the six lots, this is the only lot that has this statement on it, granting the right to, uh, build a dwelling with four, four bedrooms on it. And so, it's not identified, as I said, it's not identified on the plan, uh, but, um, this is the only, uh, four lots, four houses that are built that now have only three, and there's, besides Lot Four, which is number seventy, there's also Lot Seventy-eight, um, Lot Seventy-eight does not have a deed that says they can build four lots, four, four bedrooms rather, only seventy. I'd ask for a, uh, a, uh, decision that, uh, Lot Four, house number seventy, is the, uh, one lot in this subdivision that may have four bedrooms.
So, your client is purchasing or has purchased Lot Four?
Has a PNS on Lot Four, yes.
Okay, so the plan that we have here shows a house on Lot Four.
Oh, that's on the subdivision?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Oh, that's, that's, that's gone, yeah, that was an old, that house was, uh, uh, that was torn down, it's vacant, except for a small shed up, up, uh, near where the, uh, to the, to the left of where it says Lot Four in there, but that house, at the time of the subdivision, that house, uh, was, uh, removed.
Okay, and the concrete foundation?
That's gone.
Three that-
That's gone.
That's gone, this was one compound with several lots on it and all, and Lot Four, for all intents and purposes, is vacant, that concrete foundation is gone, there is a small shed of some sort on the property, but there's no dwelling or foundation on the property.
Thank you.
What do you think this thing is?
Yeah, Paul?
Uh, this drawing shows a house, existing house on Lot Four, is that gone also?
Yeah, that's what he said, it's gone.
Not the foundation, the lot, it's, uh, the house itself.
One down here by the wetland?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's gone, yes.
Why is the Concom wanting information on these, that, did they not approve the subdivision originally, or what?
It ca, it came up in the hearing that, um, you know, we were proposing a, a four-bedroom house on it, it came up in the hearing that, um, there was some confusion about whether Lot Four would be allowed to have a four-bedroom house on it or not, so, uh, Conservation asked for a clarification.
In what way are they, is it because it's more proximate to a wetlands, or is it just, they didn't see the deal?
Um, it, it was brought up by, um, it was brought up by some of the abutters, uh, someone's here, here from, from them now, it was brought up, uh, just as a, a question whether this lot, because it was, because it was not written on the face of this plan, uh, there's a question of whether Lot Four would be allowed to have a four-bedroom house on it, and it's in, in our chain of title that we, we can-
Yeah, that's why, I wonder why there's even that question in there.
Right, we, we, we presented the deed to Conservation, and they still said they would like to- get, uh, confirmation.
Okay, other questions?
Do you have any idea, I know this dates back, but how does a deed all of a sudden have a description of how many bedrooms per lot? And it seems rather odd to me, I've certainly seen many, many, many subdivisions, but I've never seen a deed that specifies out of however many lots are here, five or six lots.
Well, yeah, the, I mean, the planning board decision said that, uh, one out of the six can have four bedrooms, so I guess, and, and it could be that at the time, the subdivision plan had already been recorded, it was supposed to have been noted on the plan, which lot could have it, uh, so I, I guess the, the developer thought the next best thing was to, you know, limit all the other, others to three, uh, and, and grant the right to Lot Four to have four bedrooms.
So, this is our discussion, what is the end result of our discussion that you'd like to see? It's a discussion.
It's a discussion, a, uh, probably similar to the, uh, discussion just before, I suppose if they take a vote or direct, uh, Mr. Bott to con, somehow confirm that Lot Four, based on, the, the subdivision, uh, let's say, the, I mean, rather, the, the, the Planning Board wrote the decision, um, that only one of lots can have four bedrooms, and it wasn't clear in nineteen eighty-six, so now it's sort of, uh, unfinished business perhaps, that, uh, the Planning Board could say, okay, Lot Four is the one lot that can have four bedrooms.
But it seems that it is clear in the documentation that you have.
Well, I would agree, yes, and that's, and the-
So, it's a deed, so- I guess that's why I'm questioning what the problem is.
Are you just looking for an affirmation that we recognize that the deed says that lot should be a four-bedroom?
If I, if, if you find that that deed is, uh-
It's like a needs no approval.
Written properly, and so, yes, you, you would find that Lot Four is the one, one lot that can have four bedrooms.
And it needs no approval.
Yeah.
Then what do we do, we accept it?
Like an A and R, but-
I'm just gonna move that we accept that Lot Four has four bedrooms, because otherwise we could really be here most of the night, figuring out who thought of that, why they thought of it, and were they taking their meds, I, I don't know.
And I think the documentation is there to say that.
It is, it says four bedrooms on it.
We don't have to do anything, I think we just have to treat it as a needs no approval, we accept it as a fact.
Right, so I'm gonna move that we accept this as stated back in nineteen eighty-six, and move on.
Or stated in the deed.
I also think we should, uh, put this letter, attach it to the, uh, the plan of record, so-
Absolutely.
In the future, these five other lots come in and say, I want to be four bedrooms, and you say, no, you're not the one that got-
So, you want him, Pam?
I agree, but I attach it, I just wanna attach it to the plan.
You okay with that, Pam?
Absolutely.
Okay, I need a second still.
Second.
Okay, you can talk.
Thank you, um, Arlene Wilson, AM Wilson Associates.
Thank you, um, Arlene Wilson, AM Wilson Associates, we represent, um, Abby Downing, who owns sixty-eight Ostrom, which is an immediate abutter. You know, it, I've seen, um, in my forty years of practice, all kinds of weird things in deeds, but the bottom line is, you can't sell what you don't own. And here, the con- the planning board decision was very clear, that whichever lot it was that was gonna have four bedrooms needed to be designated on the plan, and the plan needed to be recorded. The plan is recorded, there is no designation, your decision with the conditions is recorded, people rely on that, and they, the people who have bought in there have relied on the fact that there are gonna be three bedrooms on these lots, on each lot. So I think if indeed the planning board decides that it's an issue of fairness and somebody can have a four-bedroom home, whether it's this lot or the other vacant lot, or whichever, um, I think the proper way to do this is for you to ha- have a hearing on modification of your conditions of subdivision approval. Then you would have to, um, change that condition so that you would accept the notation in the deed instead of requiring it on the plan. I, I have no idea how that got in the deed, except that somebody probably said, oh my God, we didn't put it on the plan, we want to have this person have the four bedrooms, we'll put it in the deed, um, maybe it'll cover the situation, but I really don't think it does. I think the neighbors need to have notice because you are changing the conditions under which they bought their land, um, which was, no lot was designated as four bedrooms, and so they were all gonna be three. I'm not saying that you can't make the modification, but I think there's a process that you have to go through, and it's not a simple vote tonight. So, uh, the, um, the other issue about why did the Concom want to hear from you, that it was all right to have a four-bedroom home on this lot, is that this lot is very constrained. I don't know if Tom has the wetlands plan with him tonight, but the available area for building on this lot is very tight, the Conservation Commission, I believe, because I was there, was very concerned about the amount of lot coverage relative to the buildable area of the lot. This lot also has a variance, uh, because it couldn't meet the fifty-foot setback from the ACEC line, um, so that's why the commission wanted to be sure before they approved a house that was big enough for four bedrooms, that they actually had permission, um, because I think the alternative for the commission is to make the house smaller. So, thank you very much for your consideration.
Thank you for letting us know all of that, Tom, do you have any comments on this?
Uh, I think that's a, a, a perfectly reasonable, uh, suggestion, uh, I can certainly comport with council, but, you know, we have these, you know, old subdivisions that sort of come up where something lay fallow for decades. The planning board can modify a subdivision, uh, on their own motion, uh, but it typically happens, uh, it's, uh, attorney mentioned, uh, with hearing to the abutters, and of course, with that also comes the ability for someone to appeal it as well, uh, but if, uh, that is a process that, uh, we might follow, and we might consult with council just to make sure that we're on sound footing with that.
Yeah, I just think that's some pretty simple logic here, all the other lots are three bedrooms, and the, and the, uh, the plan was approved with one of them being the fourth, and it's the only unbuildable lot.
There's two, there are-
There are two, there are two.
There's two?
There's two there.
From this person's view.
So could the other one could be making the same claim, okay, take back what I said.
But there's a difference between the two lots, one lot has more buildable area than the other.
Right, but clearly though, the, the, the developers sold the rights and specifically called out that this is a lot that gets it in the deed.
But now-
That's not clear.
Well, the deed says.
The deed says, you not only, you get this lot, but you specifically get the fourth bedroom.
Well, we've got newer wetlands regulations since nineteen eighty-nine or whatever it was, so perhaps we ought to wait for the Concoms weigh in?
They're waiting for us, we're-
Oh, they're waiting for us.
They've got Catch Twenty-Two going on there.
Yeah, the, the plan, of course, I feel, uh, that the, the plan that we've prepared for Conservation, uh, does meet the wetland regulations, I, actually, the, the septic system is more than two hundred feet from the nearest wetland, uh, that at issue is what constrains the lot so much is the riverfront area, uh, which limits, out of forty-three thousand square feet, limits the, uh, usable land only, well, we can only disturb five thousand square feet of land within the riverfront area, and that, that's what the constraint is, but the, uh, but the septic system is outside of the riverfront area, um, which is two hundred feet wide, so it's more than two hundred feet from the nearest wetland. I have here the, uh, plan for, or rather, the deed for Lot Two, which is the other, uh, unbuilt lot, and this, this is the same location as where the, the deed for Lot, for Lot Four is on the, the second page of the deed, where it talks about, uh, other conveyances, you know, right before the signature line, and the deed for Lot Two, the only other unbuilt lot, does not contain, uh, you know, anything, say whether it can or can't, none of the other, uh, deeds, uh, have the provision allowing to build four lots. It is not quite, quite on point to say that you can't sell what you don't own, because the Prothero Trust did own the right to have four, four bedrooms on one of the lots, uh, it just wasn't, uh, stated on the plan which one.
So, Tom, you'd rather confer with town council and see whether we need to open the hearing, a hearing on this, or again, to get on firm footing, or whether it's within our purview after all this time to say, well, there's the deed, it says this lot says there will be four bedrooms, even though it wasn't noted on the plan?
Well, a- as I said, I've been at this for a while, and I've come up with a number of interesting scenarios in Falmouth in the year that I've been here for, like, so, uh, being that abundance of caution guy, uh, I'd say, let's check with council and, and, uh, get an opinion on whether the board can, you know, sort of, uh, after the fact, designate one of these lots as that designated lot for the four houses, whether it can be done administratively, or whether it needs that hearing process.
Okay.
So Pam, I'll withdraw my motion.
Thank you, and John, your comment?
Just a question, when I-
Okay, go ahead.
Uh, Tom, do you know if the, the other, uh, four, it says four houses built right now?
Yes.
Do you know if they conform to the other condition here of lawns not larger than two thousand square feet?
I don't know that, no.
Okay, thank you.
There is a large grassy area on the property, and most of it actually turns out to be on Lot Four, so, uh, it's not a lawn, it's one of those sandy, grassy areas, and of course, part of the issue is that all the people there have been using this area for a long time, and they would rather keep on using it rather than have it privately owned.
So you will confer with Frank, and then we'll determine when and if this needs to be handled further?
And if it's fine with the board, uh, when I confer with town council, I'll notify Mr. Bunker about the process, whether, uh, council's recommendation is to, uh, post a hearing with notice, uh, or that the board is on sound footing to administratively approve that.
Is the board okay if town council says administratively approved it?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I just don't want to take another couple of weeks to-
Yeah.
Have the board say whatever they're gonna say, if he has to have a hearing, we might as well get started on it.
So it's, it's in abeyance right now until further information is derived, okay?
Can I just ask a, just a procedural question? This to me opens up an incredible number of possibilities for old subdivision plans that have not been built out, and somebody comes back in and says, well, this isn't exactly what we were told, and we love using the land, we prefer nothing be built on it, I think we've got another parcel right now, people going through that. I think you take a nineteen eighty-six subdivision plan, thirty-some years old, and then you open up a public hearing where probably ninety-nine point nine percent of the folks who were involved then are no longer here, and I, I, I just think that's just opening up something, I don't know if we really want to go there.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I am certainly hoping that Frank says, no, you don't have to have a public hearing, because it seems very unfair to do that to a very old subdivision plan.
Well, uh, typically there's a limit on the number, uh, uh, the, uh, amount of time you have to construct a subdivision, but constructing a subdivision isn't building all the houses in it, that's the roads and the drainage and things like that, and we recently had this with, uh, a broken bow lane with, uh, a subdivision there. So if you built the roads and you built the subdivision, you put it all in place, you just haven't sold the lots, you've completed your subdivision, so, uh, like I said, this is one of those, uh, the next anomaly, uh, and I, I, I certainly, there are some anomalies in other places as well, but I'm just, as they come up, I'm like, hmm, uh, so I said, I think that, uh, in, in the abundance of caution, let's check with council and say, you know, it's fine for the board to go and designate a lot, in particular Lot Four, uh, as the, as the deeds describe.
Keep in mind, uh, the lot's buildable, we're only talking about inside the walls and the use of a particular room.
Right, I mean, because-
It's not like it's land that the neighborhood's been using as public land and walking on and everything, it's a buildable lot, and-
I get it.
They're either gonna have a walk, one really big room, or two smaller ones, period.
That's what seems so ridiculous.
Yeah, that's the ridiculous part, yeah.
Seems just ridiculous.
Yeah, so, all right, then we'll-
Which we really don't do.
I didn't even think this was part of site plan, how many bedrooms can go into a house.
Apparently this was a decision that, I'm not throwing anybody under the bus, but the Falmouth Planning Board, me.
It might have been.
So, I mean-
Who signed it?
I wasn't on the board then.
Who signed it? Pat, no, it's-
I have a stamp in my office, it says blame Curry, but we're not gonna, uh, no, uh, Mr. Curry did not sign it. So anyhow, like I said, we have these, uh, uh, these, uh, occasional anomalies, uh, usually with some sort of ancient paperwork, uh, and this sort of goes into those, we had a covenant we needed to release for a development that was never built, and the covenant was still on the record up on, uh, on, uh, West Falmouth Highway a few years ago, or years ago, and, uh, so there's, um, there's stuff out there.
Well, let's see what Frank says, I'm very curious.
So we'll carry this forward, we don't have to continue or anything, because it's there, we'll carry it forward until we get Frank's determination on it.
We're gonna hear from the public on this?
I thought we were gonna let Tom, permanent.
No, no, he's gonna check with Frank, and before we go any further on it.
Okay, so you don't want the public here to-
He's good.
We don't know what grounds we'd even be discussing it under at this point, that's why I hesitate, um, I think we need Frank's determination before we can continue it, because it-
Okay.
Any, the public discussion would just be based upon no secure knowledge, except that which Tom has presented us, the deed, so that's the way I'm looking at it right now. So we gotta get Frank to weigh in on it. So, we shall go back then, thank you, Tom.
Thank, thank you for your time.
We'll go back to the, uh, main menu?
Yeah, the main menu, the wastewater management report, menu.
Oh, and look who we have here.
Oh, menu, yeah.
The presenter of the wastewater management report.
Can you tell I have an eat?
So fabulous job, by the way, Mr. Turkey.
Really did.
Fabulous.
Hasn't even done anything yet.
No, yes he did.
You missed what he did, John.
You missed his presentation.
Talk about another time.
Yes.
Well, we said we were going to be there, and we were, except for the two that were traveling and couldn't.
Let's see, where did you go?
This is absurd, let's have an open hearing.
It should be a PowerPoint presentation, that's right. Let's go. Walk down the hearing, let's check the lawns.
We don't know what the grounds are.
I don't disagree with that, it's just that Tom, I think, hey, I'm gonna have to make an administrative decision, I'm gonna bring it back here.
We could, we'd beg if he comes back here just for a decision to that.
No, he wanted that determination, I-
Give me the name and the- You know, not until he knows what Frank has to say, as far as I know, but-
Yes, sir.
If you want.
Pat, yeah.
First of all, I'm not sure why I'm here, I didn't know Eric Kirkland was gonna be here, this is his report, he made a major presentation at the Board of Selectmen a week ago, so, uh, I received a notice yesterday that the chairman asked me to summarize this for purposes of the board, since I was in Boston all day today, I had to do something last night, so I tried to pull excerpts together to kind of get the synthesis of what's going on, and if it's not true, I'm sure I'll be challenged. This is the Falmouth Comprehensive Wastewater Management Plan excerpts, this report was done probably over a period of two years or so, it's a very comprehensive report, and I really suggest you read it, there's an awful lot of information in there that is impossible to capture, not only in Eric's presentation last week, but in the brief summary here, so it's worth looking at, there's a lot of detail in there, it was quite a remarkable effort by the, uh, by the committee. Just a little bit of background, Falmouth has more coastal estuaries than anyone on the Cape, a system was proposed in two thousand nine, that said, we're gonna sewer everything in Falmouth for six hundred million dollars, well, that didn't go very well, and the Board of Selectmen set up a water quality management committee in two thousand eleven, and since then, they've been working diligently, diligently on this. Now, the Environmental Policy Agency also requires an update by the end of this year on the progress made in the last five years and what you plan to do in the next five years. So the comprehensive plan includes five south-facing estuaries, um, Little Pond, Green Pond, Born's Pond, Great Pond, and Wacoit Bay, Eel River area. You generally see where they are, all the south-facing estuaries going into the sound. There's been a number of progress, a lot of progress made in the last five years, one was the Eco Toilet Demonstration Project, and that considered a lot of effort in there, and the result was insufficient consumer acceptance, so that's not going forward. Fertilizer, fertilizer bylaw to reduce nitrogen discharge, and that bylaw was passed in two thousand thirteen, so that's a win. Demonstration of aquaculture techniques, that was sent in Little Pond and West Falmouth Harbor, and identified potentially suitable areas for shellfish aquifer, that's moving forward. Deel River Project, a request proposal's been issued on several sites, and that also is moving forward. In addition to progress in the last five years, inlet widening, town meeting voted for punting, funding and permits for the Mennot Road Bridge Construction by DPW, those permits have been granted. Innovative altern- alternative systems, twenty-five systems were installed, I think along West Falmouth, and they're being monitored right now, so that's ongoing. Sewering Little Pond Watershed, town voted forty million dollars to sewer thirteen hundred and fifty properties, and that was completed in two thousand eighteen on time and under budget, that's a real win for the town. Oyster Pond Watershed, uh, the intent is to analyze IA Systems for sewers, and that's gonna be evaluated in the future, and of course, at West Falmouth Harbor, upgrades to the, uh, sewer plant have improved the nitrogen discharge in that harbor to, uh, about three milligrams per liter, and it's the first estuary in Cape Cod to meet the total maximum daily load, so that's a big win also, and there's a lot of credit to the committee for all these activities. What's going on next five years? Restore Great Pond, alternative options including shellfish- Restore Great Pond, alternative options including shellfish, uh, aquifer, permeable, permeable reactive barriers, cranberry bog restoration, but they still need searing. T-Ticket Acapescot area in, to Great Pond. Primary residential areas, the lowest sub area is not recommended since it discharges to the Vineyard Sound. And the existing sewer redevelopment area, accommodate growth and increase flows with new force made along Brick Hill and Road. Also, next five years, treatment plant upgrades, there's a requirement for a third sequencing bacteria act at the plant, and that is being considered by the town. Uh, new tertiary treated discharge, the limit is for tertiary discharge, uh, there's plant capacity currently, but they can't discharge over the current limit. And several parcels were looked at by the committee, the Augusta parcel, that's not been recommended, that's behind Falmouth Lumber. Uh, there's too, too long a force made, there may be other options for that land. Joint Base Cape Cod is, excuse me, is not recommended at this time because there's planned expansion discharge line, and there's several other communities involved in that one. Falmouth Country Club, that also is not recommended due to the long force made and potential disruption to the recreational use. And the existing recharge beds need further study, and that's ongoing. Outfalls is also a consideration, it's on the table, and that requires further story, the state law allows it, and there was very positive experience on the improvement of Boston Harbor with no negative environmental impact on that project. In fact, it's cleaned up the harbor quite well. Funding for next five years, Low Pond and Burns Pond were funded in two thousand fourteen when all debt was paid, so there's no tax increase. The town has a window of opportunity in fiscal year twenty twenty-five, so to move forward with that, vote approval has to occur in twenty twenty-four, and that's a real consideration. The town's capital plan approved by the Board of Selectmen provides sixty million for water quality projects in fiscal twenty twenty-four, so they're really behind this, this activity. The town also can, may consider state revolving funds, which would, uh, be alone with zero percent, uh, financing. And also, the town could consider revenues from Water Protection Fund, the air B, B and B tax when that becomes available. So, there are options for funding this that would not, uh, impact tremendously the town. After next five years, phase two searing T-Ticket Acapescot area, Great Pond, some aquaculture. Coit Bay, there's a joint study going on with Ashby and Sandwich for an intermucible agreement with forty-eight sub watersheds in that area, that's an ongoing activity that's being monitored very carefully by the committee. Here's a financing plan, uh, I, you really can't see it very well, but basically, it's laid out in this report here, and again, I suggest you take a good look at the report, it's very well done, very comprehensive.
Thank you, Paul. And Eric?
Anyone had to? Well, I love that.
Would you like to add anything, Eric? Okay, does it, is. Yeah, John.
Well, I, I have two questions, please. Talks about the next five years, and, uh, says, uh, residential areas, Great Pond, Green Pond, and then it says lower sub area not recommended for searing, where is the lower sub area?
I think you see it on that.
At, at the, uh, bottom of the Acapescot Peninsula, um, there's, there's an area that is, um, under, mu- much of the groundwater there flows straight into Vineyard Town, so it doesn't affect the estuaries. And so, that's one reason not to sewer down there. There's a fair amount of wetlands and unbuildable lots, that's another reason you, you wouldn't wanna sewer down there. And the economics of it are, would, would make less sense than it would anywhere else. But the principal reason is, uh, most of the groundwater flow isn't into the estuaries, and we're trying to clean up the estuaries.
Okay. Thank you, my second question is, town's capital plan approved by Board of Selectmen provides sixty million dollars for water quality projects in fiscal year two thousand twenty-four. Is that for searing, or is it for any other project that might come up?
It's, it's essentially for searing, it, it. Yes, it'll, it'll involve some improvements at the plant, some pipes to the plant, some collection systems, the T-Ticket Acapescot area. But yes, it's all about searing, it's not about drinking water or, or any other kind of, uh.
So, if that gets approved by town meeting, what areas do you think would be seared next?
The, the premise here is, with, with the, sixty million dollars to you and me is an enormous amount of money. When you start spending it on wastewater infrastructure, it becomes less enormous, and you can't do everything you might wanna do. Within the sixty million dollar sort of window, um, what, what, what we're recommending to the selectmen would be, do the T-Ticket area, Phase One, if you have the map there, it's, it's up, upper, the upper section of Mary Vista, it's, uh, T-Ticket Path area, it's Falmouth Port area, it's the, uh, uh, the area across the river on the other side.
Shorewood Drive.
Shorewood Drive. Uh, basically, it's that, that section would be done in two thousand twenty-five. Along, along with it, you would have to run a pipe from that area up Brick Hill and Road to the plant because the, the current pipes that service the town don't have the capacity to take that much more, uh, effluent. So, you have to, and while you, once you get it there, you have to have a new batching reactor, whatever they call it, which is another major expense. And you have to have a discharge site for the treated effluent after it gets through the plant because, uh, the current discharge sites won't take anymore. So, it's, it's a package, if you, if you wanna do any searing, you have to do all those three things at the same time.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, anybody else? Pam?
Any thought of individual sewer treatment plants that would accommodate large numbers of homes?
Yeah, the committee's thought about, you mean like a neighborhood sort of situation? Yeah, we, we did, we have thought about that over the years, and the, we basically made an early policy decision that trying to site a sewer plant in anybody's neighborhood was a waste of time. We, we just, we're not gonna go there. We have a plant that is functioning better than almost any other plant in Massachusetts. We, we know how to run it, it collects all this, all the wastewater there, it comes out three parts per milliliter, nothing, no, no one does it better. We weren't about to start fighting neighborhood by neighborhood to, to build a, a smaller plant in those neighborhoods.
My second question is, were you to sewer these areas, would you go to the state for, would you bond this and then, um, look for a zero interest rate to pay the debt off?
The, the way it worked last time, that we actually got a, uh, SRF loan from the state at zero percent interest, they actually lent the money. The, the town would borrow short-term, but then as the project was completed, the money would come from the state revolving fund to pay off the town's short-term loan, so. So, so we, at the end of the day, we owe this, the state revolving fund the money at zero percent.
Right, but we still have to pay the money back.
We do, and the town, the town pays for a good portion of it out of general tax revenues, and the residents in the area pay for a portion of it through the Betterment.
Betterment, right. Anyone else?
Glad you're here.
No, thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
There, there is a, a planning element to all of this, which, which, you know, you're thinking ahead here. If, if our Phase One gets implemented, you will have a sewer line that runs from the old school administration building to Oxbo Road. Which is an area that currently does not have a sewer line, and it's an area that is currently large, you know, a mix of business and residential, but, but it's certainly not heavy-duty business or commercial, and, uh, the pressure would be on, once there's a sewer pipe there, for people to think in, more intensive use would be appropriate, and you have five years to plan for that. If, if, if this goes forward, uh, there will be pressure on the town and on the planning board to say, let me do this, let me do that, let, let's do other things now that I have a sewer in front of me, uh, the options are, are, are much broader for, for development.
We're just so constrained in terms of doing anything of any substance for affordable housing, housing, for example. And because we don't have a multifamily zone that we're gonna be working on, but in order to accommodate that, we need to look to searing. So, which comes first?
Well, the sewer.
Has to come.
If, if the selectmen and the town meeting and the voters, and everybody else, uh, e- accept these recommendations, the sewer, there will be a sewer line in that area in two thousand twenty-six, which is not that long
Right.
a time. So, you have, as I say, you have five years to plan, uh, plan for that, and whatever you come up with, we can hardly wait.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
There's another comportant opponent, although we do have sewer in, uh, the Davis Straits area, we don't have the outfall pipe. So, we're gonna be up against the Flow Neutral Bylaw, they can prioritize housing, and that's one of the things of the twenty percent left the selectmen have identified, they are gonna try to do it for housing, but we're gonna use that up pretty damn quick if we don't get the outfall. So, that's, that'll not only impact the new sewer area, but the old sewer area, in, in fact, and our ability to do anything of the five hundred units of housing we're we're supposed, our, our housing plan calls us for us to build.
Or seventy-two a year.
Well, the math is the same, right, you get up there.
Yeah, you know, that's another thing to be thinking about, that, right now, the town's policy is first come, first served.
Right.
Any, anybody who is on a sewer line and wants to increase their capacity comes in and the capacity is there. Once it hits the eighty percent, the town's gonna have to have a plan for wh- what comes next.
We, haven't we already hit it, I've already been required to apply for it for four different properties, I think we are at the eighty percent. The Flow Neutral Bylaw application started.
You, you actually, you have to apply now, even though we're not at the eighty percent.
I thought we were there.
Uh, we're actually, if, if all the projects that are in the pipeline are at least being contemplated come to fruition, we'll be at seventy-eight percent, so it's, so it's not far away.
We got two percent to go.
But, uh.
We don't wanna wait till then.
That's a fact, I mean, other towns do it differently, they, they prioritize, you can't have a car wash, you can have affordable housing, you, we allocate it. And other towns have worse problems, like Buzzards Bay, where they, you come in and they say, we have no capacity for you, you can't build. And I don't, you know, Falmouth doesn't wanna be there.
That stops those forty Bs.
But it can, it stops everything. So, that, that can happen, but it's not the route the town has chosen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, tha- thank you, and, and thank you all for coming the other night, it was, we, we appreciate it, and the more people that know what this is about, the better, and, uh, because it's a very big deal, we don't, we don't wanna show up in two thousand twenty-four and have people say, you know, I never heard of this.
Well, that's another reason that we get distribution over the airways here too, it hits a lot of people.
Right.
And there is absolutely no way that I think the town can thank the industriousness and the that you all have given to this project, that it's come to where it is right now.
Well, we have some wonderful people who, who give so much of their time, I mean, if, if we had to pay Virginia for her time, we couldn't afford it. And that's, that's true for a lot of the other members of this committee, it's, uh, it's been a remarkable group to work with, and I, I walked into it as many people have, knowing nothing about the subject, and
Derek, are you?
Hanging around with all these other people who know some, who know everything about the subject has really been a great education.
Are you doing anything on FCTV? In terms of that, if you did the same presentation on FCTV, that they would play sporadically so that you would hit a larger portion, because we know that people don't.
They did, FCTV recorded this presentation. At the Herman Room.
At the Herman.
Yeah, I understand that, but I asked if Eric was gonna go and do
Again.
another presentation so that people could actually hear you, rather than just, I mean, they did the recording, but the recording only goes so far. You know, you need a way to sort of interface with people, whether they call in, or I don't know how, whether FCTV is set up for that, but other there are other communities where people can actually
Sure.
call in and have their questions answered, which I think would go far here.
No, that's a, that's a very good idea, and, and we should do something like that because, you know, it's a big story.
My first one for twenty nineteen.
Okay.
But every now and then I have a good idea.
That's a great one, thank you very much.
And they'd be happy to have you do something like that, I really believe that.
Well, I'm not sure they wanna hear fifty-five minutes of me again, but, uh, but we, we can do a shorter version maybe, and, and you're right, a, a dialogue would be good for people to be able to get questions out, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now, Jim has requested, and we agreed that we would take a vote on his doing a presentation for, uh, Form Based Code because there is a request, town meeting for funding to come up. And as he did with the accessory apartments, you know, we had an FCTV presentation, and what he put together was sent out to all the town meeting members as well to essentially sell this as a good thing for town meeting to fund because it's not its own individual warrant article anymore, but it still needs support, and a lot of it just. So.
Now, if we authorize Jim to do the FCTV presentation on Form Based Code.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, you can ask a question.
There's a number of ways FCTV do these, they have an interview session, for example, Barbara Kenopoulos, where they go through a discussion. And they have one or two people there that's pretty effective, or you're going to have just a dry presentation with no interaction.
I don't know.
I think you need to, to think about that a little bit.
We can do, Barbara would probably be happy to talk with Jim.
Well, the way we did it before is I did the interviewing ahead and you with Bob there, and I asked the questions, and we got it done. I think having, uh, somebody that doesn't know anything about the presentation asking the questions won't get us down much of a road.
But didn't you have this envisioned as a three-person thing?
It, yes, I did, but it's also just getting it done in timing-wise, and, and who wants to participate, yes. But, and actually, I think we should.
I don't think you pictured it as a dry presentation.
Well, essentially.
I think if you were to take a look at the, uh, example we did for affordable housing, I don't think you would find that that was a dry presentation.
No, it wasn't.
I thought it worked really well, and it was really successful, so I kinda resent the approach that I'm gonna do that again, make it dry.
Well, essentially, what we've done is given Jim a vote to say.
Haven't you seen my presentation?
Have at it and put it together and make it work.
Many times.
Yeah, you think it's too dry?
I'm just saying, the interaction with someone like Barbara asking questions and somebody else there might make it more you and.
Would you like to do it? Why don't you do it with me, Paul?
Why don't you do it with the town plan?
Hey, this can be worked out, would you look at that, Mark? I'm gonna have to be propped up pretty soon.
All I'm trying to say is, I think you have to think through what form a presentation's gonna be that would be most effective.
That's his job, we're giving it to him, okay? So, are there any committee reports, please say no.
No, I'm just gonna be very brief.
We haven't voted.
Oh, I thought we did.
No, we didn't.
Oh, we didn't, okay, all in favor?
Move in a second, the press interrupted.
Aye.
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 Uh, the, on October second is the, uh, Face of Affordable Housing at the Herman Room, it's six thirty to eight thirty, and there'll be presentations by any number of presenters, presentation by presenters, which is a new concept. Builder, um, people in the community, people who live, uh, and Tom actually has our handout that hopefully you will see all over town. But anyway, six thirty to eight thirty in the Herman Room on October second, and what we're trying to do is dismiss the myths of who lives in affordable housing, so that people don't think we're going out and beating the bushes for people to come in and, and, but they're just like you and me. And, um, that they deserve to live in decent, affordable housing with dignity. So, please come to the presentation and hopefully.
That's Wednesday, October second, six thirty to eight thirty, the Falmouth Public Library in the Herman Room.
Didn't I just say that?
Yes, I was just repeating it with emphasis, since I had the flyer.
Thank you, Mr. Bott.
And then, we've got an announcement on Maloney Properties is trying to seek applications, and they have not gotten any yet for two affordable housing units. The Vill- a village at Old Main Condominiums, forty-one Old Main Road, Falmouth.
And if I may, with emphasis?
Please.
Uh, there have been, uh, no applications, uh, at all for these two affordable units. The deadline is October eleventh, and so, folks who think they may be able to qualify, uh, should certainly, uh, contact the folks at Old Village, uh, their phone number, uh, seven eight one nine nine two five three zero one, or you can check with the planning office, and we'll give you the contact information for the email, but it is really one of those things we talk about on a. But it is really one of those things we talk about on a pretty regular basis, the need for affordable housing and the difficulty of qualifying for it. You have to have enough money to qualify for the mortgage, but not too much money that you don't qualify as income-based and with assets. So it is a very hard needle to thread, and recently, we had an affordable unit go to somebody. Three-bedroom unit, but they didn't necessarily need a three-bedroom unit. So we have this sort of mismatch for what our needs are and what the units are, but these are two existing, or two units being built. And the option for the developer is if they don't have takers on this, they're gonna have to remarket the property, and it'll have to go further out. We would love to have people who need housing and qualify for them in the housing as quickly as they can and not have to go with this next round of things. So hopefully, folks will take a look at this property, forty-one Old Main Street, look at the parameters, and consider contacting these folks to see if you qualify by October eleventh.
Okay, and one of these letters is exactly what Pam was announcing.
From Ed Curry, our Urban Housing Chair.
Right. Okay. Yeah.
I just wanna comment, I don't know why they chose a company from, a real estate company from Boston to do this. They didn't choose anyone in Cape Cod or even in the county. They, they reached out to a Boston company to do it, and I don't understand why they did that.
I, according to the newspaper article, they have had a lot of experience doing it, and that's what I read, and I couldn't tell you anything further.
But they don't know the local market.
Right.
Well, and, and let me just say this. When you're doing an affirmative action, uh, marketing plan, you're not just marketing in the local market. The necessity is to look out beyond the community. There is a, a local preference for one of these units, but if you're, if you're doing affordable housing, and I use the example of my neighbors in Duxbury, 'cause they probably don't watch the TV. If you, our TV, if you're, have an affordable unit in Duxbury, and you're only marketing through your Duxbury newspaper and your mailing list, you're not gonna have that public asset available to a broad source of the community. So the affirmative outcome marketing plan usually has a very broad basis, reaching out to lots of different folks. But it is sort of unfortunate that this appears to be.
Well, you can look up the company. You can look up their background, see what they've sold. I did. I think it's strange they went to Boston.
Well, besides.
Yeah, I mean, I, I really think, because it's supposed to be initially priority for Falmouth residents and then contiguous towns, and, you know, it can move out from there, but here we have affordable units. Affordable is interpretive, interpreted in different ways, and there's gonna be a, a con, a, a fee involved. So, you know, it, it's not that easy to qualify for some of these.
Could be somebody who works in Falmouth but lives in Bedford.
Mm-hmm.
You know, who would like to move to Falmouth.
Oh, exactly. It can be people that work here.
So. Yeah, that, that don't live here that would like to live here.
Right.
Okay, then there's a letter from, or a note from Kristen Clozier. I'm not sure if that's how you pronounce her name in regard to the DRI public hearing on the New Quisett facility. That public hearing, Monday, October seventh at five thirty PM at the Falmouth Public Library. She'll be posting the hearing, it says next week, but this was dated September sixth.
Yes, the hearing is now posted.
So those are all of the correspondence. Next meeting, I'm gonna skip future agenda items because we've got a bit coming up already. Next meeting is October first, and that's gonna be the zoning articles for the twenty nineteen annual Fall Town Meeting. That's a major portion of our agenda, and you heard we're gonna have a couple of other things come up as well. So, with this.
Move to adjourn.
Meeting adjourned. Yeah.